You don't want to be recorded, turn your camera off and your mic off. We keep everybody muted unless you'd like to speak and then raise a hand and Taylor Herman can unmute you. That protects us from Zoom bombers. And we want to thank Windcam for bringing us to you and Cheryl Dennis for being here as our recording secretary. And Taylor Herman as our town planner is with us. We've got Ian Sexton, our new assistant town planner, and we should have. Michael Wang shortly, but let's, uh, let's come to order with a roll call vote. Diabgerius.
Present.
Nick Rosetos.
Present.
Brian Vernelia.
Present.
I don't see John Cortezus, is he here? And I'm present, so that's four out of five so far. Terry Wang as well, are there updates? A couple. Uh, I will do a couple of quick updates. We've gotten a lot of, I sent out the draft to a lot of stakeholders and I've got, we've gotten some excellent comments back, which I think have been incorporated into our discussion tonight, so we'll kind of get to that in a bit. Otherwise, we had mentioned at our last meeting. That we were going to try to explore some funding for getting the economic feasibility analysis done for three A's so that we can request that developers round up when they're calculating the number of inclusionary units to include. We are in discussions with the. With the town manager and the select board to see if it might be an appropriate. Application for ARPA funding, so we'll keep you posted as that, um, as that rolls out. But it's possible that there'll be funds available to get that done this year, um, so stay tuned. Any other updates that are, um, not on the agenda for the evening?
I would just say that the CPA advisory group met a couple of weeks ago. I'm, I'm a reminder, I'm the representative from the planning board. We didn't really do much other than introductions and sort of, uh. The chair, who's Michelle Pryor, um, presented a number of towns and asked each of us to dig into some of those towns. We're meeting again tomorrow night, um, so some towns that have the CPA that are like us, that aren't like us, that are near us, that are far from us, sort of a range of different towns. So, uh, that continues tomorrow night and, uh, everything that comes out of that will just be advisory for the WCCP. If the CPA passes in November, so I'll keep you informed if anything exciting happens, but so far not much exciting.
Exciting that it's pulling together though, so thanks for that update. Um, does anyone else?
Sure, yeah, I, I just want to, I'll just mention that I was at the design review committee meeting, uh, last. It was, uh, Wednesday and so we talked about, um, the, the requested comments and. I think we, we got some, um, I know Maura put in a good deal of time and there are some from, uh. Jamie DeValle. So hopefully, hopefully that's what we need. There was, I guess some mention of, um. You know, drawing from the Lexington, uh, I guess, design guidelines. But we haven't had a chance to put those together yet, so I'm hoping that there'll be some time. To do that. And we can, you know, hopefully, uh, come up with some, some more specific. I guess points that we can insert, but I think most of it's as requested, it's, it's either inserted or it's ready to go.
Okay. We will get to that when we are discussing, um, North Maine. I think that's what you mean.
Yeah.
Anything, anything else about liaison to design review you'd like us to know?
Um, no, it's just that, uh, they've done a lot of work on it and, uh. So I'm, I'm, I'm pleased.
Great, thanks for going to that meeting. Uh, anyone else have any updates for us? All right, well, we continue the, uh, trend of being ahead at the beginning of the meeting. But I think we could probably get started with the discussion on the ADU.
We don't have a timeline on the agenda, so we can go, it just says seven o'clock and.
No, I'm so used to it being seven fifteen while we have to wait for the end of the update, so all right, great, so, um. So, uh, I will probably hand a lot of this meeting over to Taylor to lead because he's been writing so furiously. We have, um, we have a draft of the ADU amendment that would bring us, um, kind of in sync with the regulations released by the state. So, um, Taylor, are you ready to take it away here?
Sure. Yep. Yep. Okay, so. Uh, as we discussed last week, we, oh, yeah, it's in the screen here. Okay, so as, as we discussed last week. The state has made some changes, uh, introduced in the. I'm going to get the name wrong, but a affordable housing bill or something along those lines to, uh, to make accessory dwelling units, ADUs. A by right use, a by right accessory use, um, in all single family zones around the, around the state. Now Winchester already has a ADU bylaw that allows, um, that allows ADUs. But the one thing that, that one major difference that we have that the state would supersede us in. See, supersede us with is our occupancy restrictions, so currently. We require that the occupant be sixty-five or over or disabled, uh, according to the state, uh, that is not allowed. You, you cannot have occupancy restrictions. So what we have in front of us here is the, um, is town council's. Red line of our existing article to make it compliant with the states. Now you're going to see a lot of redlining, redlining here, but really the major change is just the removal of that, of that occupancy. Restriction, the rest of it is more just language and, and, and changing the tone, redirecting to, 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 to other places. This is in the, in the folder that I sent earlier, so, so, so you can take a look yourself. But again, most of it is really just language changes, uh, removing the, the, the occupancy restriction. There are two things that town council is asking the planning board to consider. We could either take, um, take this as is, or we can make these two, two changes. Right now, we, um, as, as written today, we allow ADUs to be on single family. If, if a, if a property has a single family or a duplex, the state is only requiring us to do a single family. So the state is not requiring us to, to add, uh, to allow the adding of ADUs to duplexes. However, that is what is currently written in the Winchester bylaw, so we have the opportunity to change that. It would be more restrictive than we currently have, but we have that option, so, uh, town council wanted to, wanted to mention that. The other is we have the ability to add a mini site review process. And I say mini site review because it can't be a full site, a full, you know, more restrictive site review process, but we can have a site review process, um, a site plan review process, excuse me, uh, that is very specific to the, to the ADUs. If we wanted to apply that mini site plan review process, we could take from our existing site plan and just apply what is necessary. For example, um. Excessive hardscape or drainage issues, so on and so forth, that would bring them into site plan. We can do that, um, site plan does make the bylaw more restrictive and ADUs less likely, but we are allowed to do that. So those are the two things. Anyone who's had an option to do this, feel free to ask any questions. We should make a decision on this when we meet next Monday, uh, whenever we meet next to vote on the. On North Maine, we should also make our final vote on this. Go ahead, Diab.
Um, so, uh, in my opinion, I do not think we should, uh, make this more restrictive. So I am in favor of maintaining the duplex and also not, um, imposing an additional site plan review. Or, or site review rather, um. I had a, there was an additional. Thing to this, which is. There's a. Something about requiring this to meet a, the single family. Um, under three or whatever the new number is on the second page, the very first element says. They must comply with requirements applicable to single family homes in the table of dimensional requirements, which I think. That's new and, um. I don't know why it's in there, it would certainly. I think, um, if we chose to include, to continue, um, allowing them on duplex lots, that would be in contention with that.
Where, where is that, Diab?
Oh shoot, your, your, your one does different than mine.
It's on page one in section two, I think, uh, page one.
Yeah, I don't have words, so mine is split differently than yours.
So the change is, is.
They require, yeah, right there, it's right in the middle of the screen. Accessory dwelling unit and primary dwelling unit, as there was a lot there on, must comply with the dimension requirements applicable to single family homes. Which I, I don't know how that would impact. ADUs on duplex lots, because they don't meet the requirements of single family homes.
So I took that as meaning that it had to comply with the dimensional. Requirements such as. So I was thinking setbacks and all that, but, but I would think that ADUs should comply with the accessory structure.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Well, I, I don't know that we have to introduce any new language. I, I, so this is a change from the previous language, which simply said they had to comply with.
I see what you're saying, I don't see any reason why we can't, why we can't. Why we can't say that, so it would essentially just be removing this, this change.
Well, I'm just trying to understand why it's in there, I, I, because it's new and I don't know why it's in there.
I think my, my guess is so that it can reinforce the fact that, that. It's, 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 it's by, it's by right or equally compliant with anything in single family zone. I can, I'll, I'll, I'll ask Jay about that, I don't see any reason why it can't be removed though, or why we, why we just don't add it. I don't see any reason, but, but I can ask.
I, I imagine he was trying to avoid people cherry picking the part of the dimensional requirements that we have and just choosing the lot. You know.
Well, the other, the other problem is that the addition of the words as well as the lot they're on. Means that if you have a non-compliant lot, which quite a few. Houses don't, then they can't put in an ADU.
Right.
Which is, is a further restriction.
Yep. Well, I think it's. I think it's all leading to them triggering a special permit required, right? So it's sort of, they can apply for appropriate relief and then.
But.
And then if they don't comply, they're triggering a special permit.
Yeah.
How is it now, is, is the current, uh, one set up for, that it does trigger a special permit?
No, it was designed so that it wouldn't have to be a special permit. That this was a by right use as long as you met all of the, you met the requirements.
Yeah, I think it needs to be clarified that it should match the requirements of the lot that it, or the, the, the unit that it's accessory to, the dwelling.
And, and, and does the Massachusetts version ask for a special permit?
No, it says it's by right.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we specifically crafted this to not go through special permits because special permits have been. Abused in other communities to draw out this process and make it impossible for people to get ADUs.
Yeah, but they're also important to, to be able to have a say in what things look like, so I don't think we should diss them entirely.
Well, there's, there was. We worked a lot on this and one of the things that came out with one of the people who we worked with on the ADU committee. Is that she was a consultant with a number of people from multiple communities. Where they had people with disabilities who were trying to put ADUs on. And the special permit process was used to essentially shut down their ability to put in an ADU. And so this is really weighing the balance between the rights of the owners to care for their families. And we do have additional language in here, which does provide for the building commissioner to evaluate whether or not. And the building commissioner with the advice of the design review committee. To determine whether or not the design is compatible with the neighborhood. So this was a compromise that we put in in order to ensure that. People would be able to build the ADUs without untoward opposition based on. Things that were not really specific to the location of the, of the actual building. There was, there's a lot of, um, discrimination against people with disabilities and a lot of, in a lot of communities. That was used to halt construction of ADUs, so we, we tried to keep, maintain a balance. And this is the compromise we came up with.
I, I think the design consistency with the primary dwelling is pretty well protected in here. As long as, and I think the, they, it's, it's a little in conflict to suggest that it has to meet the, the single family requirements because then number four, wait, not number four, number three, renumbered number three. For ADUs that are accessory to a duplex, it sort of goes back and renames that you're paying attention to the size of the larger of the duplex unit. So I think that may have just been, I think that we either need to just strike the. The. Requirements applicable to single family homes or reword it to say applicable to the. Requirements of the accessory, of the structure to which it's accessory.
I think that if the original language was sufficient.
Yeah. Yeah.
The original language was okayed by town council at the time, so.
Yeah. Yep. I'll point out that we added, uh, number nine, Jay added number nine, which is ADUs may not be used to short-term rentals as defined, blah, blah, blah. Or otherwise rented for a period shorter than thirty-one days, so it's not, they won't be. Short-term rentals or any of the Airbnb style.
Yeah, that was, part of that was actually in the definition, did it get removed from the definition as well? Yeah, it got removed from the definition because that's in there.
I, I, I always prefer to have things in the. In the language instead of the definition, but.
Yeah, as long as, as long as it's in there.
Yep.
Taylor, if you remind me, sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry, I was, I thought you were done, I just didn't mean to cut you off, go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
No, I, I was changing topic, so I want you to finish, I apologize.
I, I just, you know, from my point of view, we, we worked really hard with a bunch of really dedicated people from the community to bring this language as is and. I would. Really like us to maintain the spirit of what we, the compromise we got to. And which passed town meeting and simply make the minimal changes required to make this. Compatible with state law and not introduce any language which would make it more difficult or which would narrow the ability to get an ADU.
Taylor, can you remind me what the two things that Jay suggested we need to consider? As far as the, the first one was whether we should consider remove or keep duplexes? And the other one was something, I can't remember what you said it was.
Introduce a mini site plan review.
Okay. So. My thinking is, uh. That based on the state law, this is a substantial. Change in, uh, what we will be allowing than, um, what we passed at town meeting as far as a bylaw. So I'm not sure, I feel totally compelled to. Maintain all of the, the trade-offs that we made in order to get this passed. Because we might have made different trade-offs if we were saying, if we didn't have the age requirement or something else. So I'm not sure it's just saying, keep everything else we had, had in here, but strike that one provision. So I, I, me personally, I think it, um. I think there could be a logic for removing duplexes and I think there could be a logic for a mini site plan review for both of those. Because this is now, um, it's a much more expansive, um, uh, allowance than we had before. Pretty much. It can be anybody, anywhere, and I think that, uh, we probably. I, I could go either way with the duplex, but I think we probably do want the mini site plan review, at least I think we do, um. Especially if we all of a sudden see many, many more of these than we, or we're expecting one or two here or there, but if we're expecting many, many more, I think that might be valuable, that's just my two cents. This is not, just striking the one, striking number one, um, doesn't maintain sort of the grand bargain that was made to get this passed because that's now cha, in changing inherently what was passed, so. Just my thinking.
So is there a, I would like to hear an argument for why we should strike duplexes. Because what we're saying then is that there is a, a number of people in town who will not be able to avail themselves of ADUs.
I'm not making an argument that we should strike duplexes. I'm saying the grand, the, oh, oh, the grand bargain was that it was going to be allowed for single family or duplexes and the state came in and said it's required for a single family without any age restrictions, um, so. We had it with single family and duplex, I mean, if the state thought it should be single family and duplexes, they would have presumably put single family and duplexes in the law, so I mean, it's just an expansion.
State sets a low bar to make sure it can be accommodated by all communities. And in our community, it seems really feasible and it was, it was long deliberated and decided in past their town meeting that duplexes could also accommodate this use.
I, i- is there a provision in this, um, that says, like, there's a duplex down the street from me where one, one of them. The lot's really too small to have an ADU, I mean, is that taken into consideration?
Uh, I mean, if you can't build it under the dimensional guidelines, then you can't build it.
Okay.
I mean, it, it has to fit on the lot as, just like any, any other structure, and if it doesn't, you can't build it.
And then, so then, so there are dimensional requirements that, that the lot has to be big enough for it, basically.
Yes.
I, 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 I know this was a very, I, I want to change as little as possible and I, I think, um, Diab was. Intimately involved in the process of getting the original bylaw passed and I want to stay. I want to make sure that we, that we maintain fidelity to that process and to, to what we offered the town with this bylaw initially. So I think the smallest changes we can make is the best way forward. And I think if the deliberation around ADUs previously included duplexes and did not include a site plan review, that, 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 that was navigated, um. Ahead of this discussion and I think we should respect that work.
The only thing I would slightly, uh, push back on is that the deliberation also had an age restriction that now has been removed. So, um, I, I, I'm not, if we just take that out, is this what we would have negotiated? If, if you, if we were told there was no age restriction allowed upfront. Is this where we would have landed on this either way? Or would there have been a different something we would have landed on without major restrictions? So I, um, I'm not sure if just pulling that out therefore makes it like, uh, um, the same, I, I don't know, uh, I mean.
So it will, it will apply to many, many more properties, I think.
So, I, so I, I think, I think Brian, the, there's no way of knowing, um. To be honest, my concern about doing something like this for Fall Town Meeting is that we've had no attempt, no opportunity to engage with any of the stakeholders who we worked with before on this. And so I think. If the planning board wishes to take up. And change this in substantial ways, I think we owe it to the stakeholders we worked with before to contact them. So that they will have a chance to express their views. It took us, you know, a long time, um. Without the state. Saying that you could do this on any single family lot, um, we would never have been able to get this through town meeting. So I think that there's a whole different set of, you're right, things have changed dramatically, so the choices we make may be different. But, um. What was the other thing I was going to say, um? I think that, that was pretty much it, I think, I think opening this up in the future to revisit it might, I just, it's, it's really late in the process to be making substantial changes without public input.
What is the, what happens if we, if we don't change it now? Um, and we have someone with a, you know, they're, they're building an ADU and they don't have a sixty-two-year-old on the property, what happens?
Our current law, our current bylaw holds until February second. On February third, um, the state law takes precedent or supersedes ours. So on February third, anyone can come in to, if, if we don't change this at Fall Town meeting, at Fall Town meeting. Anyone can come in on February third and apply under state by, under the state bylaw instead of ours. So we're, we're, if we don't do this at Fall Town meeting, we essentially have no rules.
Doesn't it include, is, isn't it just the parts that are in? Conflict that gets struck or the whole thing?
Anything that is, that is deemed, uh, more restrictive. Gets, gets.
Right.
Is, is, is not, is not applied. So we would, so I guess technically you'd still be able to do, you'd still be able to build an ADU on a duplex, because that's less restrictive.
But we would still be able to have, I mean, the only thing that is really in conflict with the state law is the requirement for who gets to reside in one of the two buildings. And I mean, that's the only thing that's more restrictive. So everything else should hold except for who gets to apply.
Which in my, you know, the way that I read this, there are some other changes, but most of this makes that change.
Yeah, I, um, one, one comment I forgot to make before is if we want to look at what happens when you open this up to everyone. So Arlington has an extremely, um, expansive ADU law where essentially anyone could put an ADU on any property regardless. They've had that for a couple of years and. Where essentially anyone could put an A D U on any property regardless. They've had that for a couple of years and. Um, the number of, I don't know what the recent numbers are. But certainly, um, there was not a rush to build ADUs in part because. You're, you're still talking about a project which is going to cost at least, you know. Hundreds of thousands of dollars. So this is not an inexpensive thing to do. So um, there isn't the real rush for people to put these on their houses. So. Um, in most communities which have lenient A D U laws. You don't get more than, you know, a few a year, maybe ten. Or so a year and and compare that to this, you know, the number of. You know, expansions of homes due to, you know, just standard uh building. That there's, those are much, much higher number. So.
So is there an argument? And forgive me if I'm, if this is what you were asking, Dia, is there an argument to? Do nothing now, reach out to stakeholders between now and Springtown meeting? Understanding that come February, whatever the date is, term one will be. Struck out of this law, but the rest of it presumably will, I I don't know, we'd have to ask our attorney, presumably will hold. So that we aren't guessing right now or between now and Monday, what? What the bargain was and what it would be if this is um uh getting through town meeting. Uh, is, is that an option? Is that something we should consider or is? Um, our attorneys presumably would like us to make these changes, but you're right, there's a lot of changes here and it's, it's a very different law, bylaw. Um, once you take up term one than it was beforehand. And honestly, it might not pass the town meeting, but if we do nothing, one gets struck automatically, it sounds like. So I don't know.
I think there's, so I. I think it's safer to bring this with minimal changes to be in compliance with state law, so there's no confusion. On the part of people who are applying for it. I think there's, you know, if you come in and you don't know what. You know, having it in compliance with state law. Means that people who show up in February know exactly what they, what the rules are. And they don't have to guess and we don't have to go through town council every time someone shows up with the, with the. With the um permit application. I I think it gives the planning board time to. Create, open up that conversation. I don't know, you know, it's. Revising the A D U law was not something that we discussed earlier this year, I don't think, in terms of our plans from now until next fall or next spring. So. You know, it's one of those things where, you know, if this is a really important thing. I I think that this also might be one of those things where you just wait and see if there's an issue. You know. Rather than um create zoning, which is. You know, we can't predict what's going to happen in terms of the number of units, but all indications are they will be low, lower. So. It might be that we, this, there's a solution in seek of a, in search of a problem if we go in and make things more restrictive. So I I, you know. I think I would just, you know, I would prefer to have something that is, that is consistent with state law. And then we can, we can deal with other issues. Like for instance, we haven't defined what a mini site plan review looks like. And that requires that we have to define what are the documents that are going to be, what are the, what are the criteria? All of those things. We don't, we haven't defined that yet. So if we want to include something like that, then we have to sit down and say, okay, what does that mean? Um, we've had issues in the past on the planning board trying to come up with a mini. Review for other um projects. Um, and we, we just, we spent a lot of time trying to come up with ways of incorporating, you know, shorter. Reviews without having to go all the way up to the Z B A for things and we, we're unable to come up with them. So. I think it opens up a can of worms. That I don't think we need to open right now if we want to go full in. I would just, yeah. I rambled a bit, I apologize.
Okay, uh, uh, we wouldn't vote on it tonight anyway because. I think we need more time to digest this. So, but we also don't want to waste time writing something that we're gonna, we know right now we're gonna not vote for. So why don't we? Uh, straw poll, fall versus spring. In terms of how much time we think we're going to need to pull together, something that we feel good about and something uh on a timeline that we feel is. Necessary and appropriate. So Brian, what are you thinking, fall or spring?
I would say spring myself.
Dia.
I would like to strike one. And. Put that for fall and then have a more extended discussion for spring.
Okay, Nick, what are you thinking?
I I'd like to, I I think that we should. Do it in the spring. Um, I I think some of the points that are being raised. Are going to take more time. And we're. Kind of running to the finish line on some of these other things. And we're going to give short shrift to everything that we're working on. So I I I just, uh, I'm. I I'm in favor of probably putting this uh to the spring.
Okay, we don't have John in my, my, um, I would like to suspend my judgment until I know the severability of. Number one, so. So we are, we are two springs of fall, an absent and a hung jury. So if the, if the, if. If somebody brings an application on February fifth. For. An A D U under the age of sixty two and the rest of the bylaw stands. But it can be, it can proceed, then I would like to wait until spring. Um, but if it, if it negates the entire, if it negates the entire bylaw because part of it, like if we don't have severability for clause one, then I'd like to. Follow Dia's plan. So why don't we answer that question and take a quick vote at the beginning of our meeting next Monday?
I think I concur, Carrie. If. One isn't severable and we just have a whole different bylaw of the um March first or February first or whatever it is. Then we need to just hammer it out now. But if it is just severable, then we're talking about a couple of months. Of that being gone before we get it right in the spring. So I agree with you a hundred percent.
Okay, okay. So let's get that answer and then we'll, then we'll, so if we, if the, if it's, if it's not severable and the whole thing gets struck down, then we need to be ready to vote on something. Next Monday's meeting, so we will be voting essentially on, on this and then we'd have to amend it at Springtown meeting, just as a heads up. So everyone's sort of familiar with what we'll vote on next Monday.
What, what's happening on Monday?
We need to meet on Monday to vote on North Main. Thank you for mentioning the fact that we need to schedule that meeting. Anything else on the A D U before we do a brief?
That could be, that could be a long meeting.
Uh, I hope, I hope not.
Oh, I mean.
Depends a little bit on how tonight and tomorrow.
I mean, it might, it might be during the day or, I mean.
I I, we can schedule that uh as soon as we know we're done. Anything else on the A D U? Question? Okay, um, I should have done this during updates. So we do, we will need, so we're gonna, we're gonna work through the material for the bylaw uh tonight. And then we have our public information session on the North Main rezoning tomorrow. We have, we have a lot of comments back from stakeholders. We've heard from most of the. Most of the boards and committees in town um that will be affected by the North Main rezoning. We have a couple outstanding and we want to make sure everybody is. Um, fully informed and has had a chance to respond, so we will need to meet. On Monday and that, I apologize, is my own scheduling problems. To, to vote on the draft. Um, and we probably want to bookmark. A very short meeting for the morning of the twenty third in case there are. Um, adjustments to either forms or maps or sort of smaller things that we, that aren't quite typos, but we need to shore up the morning that the warrant closes, which is September twenty third. Um, so if people are able to suggest. Meeting times for Monday and the twenty third.
Every anytime on either day, anytime you name, I will be there or be online.
That's amazing. Thank you, Brian. Um, anyone else tie, daytime, nighttime, what's preferable?
I'm available, same as Brian.
Do you want it, do we want to do a, a daytime? I'm willing to bet Taylor would. Just a guess, um, like.
Monday, I have a dentist appointment from, well, at one. Uh, but I, I'm, I'm pretty good for the. Remainer of the day. Have a ten thirty, but that's sort of flexible.
Um, so this is the sixteenth, we could meet is nine in the morning, is that?
Yeah, nine could, nine would work, I guess.
I, I'm really hoping it's short, but we may have a few details we need to, we need to address if, if we get a lot of commentary that um. That leads to significant changes or that we need to kind of hammer out. Dia, can you do nine on Monday morning, the sixteenth? Okay.
I can as well.
Taylor, Ian?
Uh, sure, whatever, whatever I have, I'll just cancel it.
We, we can work around you if it's.
No, it was, it was, it was a joke. I don't know. Yes, this, this will take. Uh, preference for that. Nine, nine on the sixteen.
Okay. For what it's worth, I think I have a hard stop at ten. Putting it down here. Okay, great. Okay, um, and then the morning of, so the twenty third would also be good if we could, if we can just save. I mean, that should be.
And do the same, the same thing for the twenty third?
Nine on the twenty third. Does that work for everybody? It should be short. It should be sort of like, looks good, Taylor thinks the warrant closes that night. So if we have anything we have to change, he's got to get it. He needs the day to get it done, so.
Presumably on the sixteenth, we will vote excluding Scrivener's errors, which can be fixed. So it's only if there's something of substance that needs to be changed between.
Right. We forgot a property on the map. We, this forum has a section we forgot about, like it'll be things like that, but it should not, we should be pretty much through. Um, by the end of Monday, the sixteenth. So you want to shoot for nine on the twenty third?
That works for me.
Okay.
Sure.
Hold on one second. Yep, I can do that.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for your flexibility. This is always the. The most time consuming stretch here. Okay. Alright, so that's all done and we can move on to. The North Main draft. Uh, we have Michael Wang, our consultant from Forman Place here. So we, we, um. We have a lot to look at. Um, I think it might be best. Since Taylor's been writing furiously and Michael has specific answers to questions that he needs, I think I'm going to hand the mic over to one of. Those folks to lead us through this section. I don't care who starts.
Um, I think. I think we should start with. Michael, if you're okay with it, your updates and we'll, um, anything that you want answers on for tomorrow night, we'll start with that. And then we'll uh jump into. Maybe some of the things that you've mentioned on the dimensional guideline, uh, the, the, the dimensional table. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was imagining. Um, alright, let me share my screen. Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Evening.
Okay. So um, what I have here really is a, a kind of a draft of. What uh I was imagining we would present tomorrow night and to solicit your feedback and to share with you some. New uh test fits that Taylor and Carrie and I and others have identified as being useful to the. The final sort of testing of the dimensional criteria. Um, and then I, I, I also, as Taylor said, have. Forwarded a bunch of comments on the dimensional tables of a few things that I noticed that have changed. Since I had last seen it and just wanted to raise those questions again in light of these sort of final set of test fits. So. I I'm not going to give this presentation, but I'm just going to kind of go through it and and sort of explain to you what I'm imagining um. Sharing, um, Taylor, you talked about, you were going to get me a few slides to insert at the beginning, uh, to sort of cover these issues that I. Had used at the beginning of the previous um public hearing presentation. So. Those I'm imagining will come out unless you want to utilize parts of those, but um we'll insert a couple of slides here at the beginning for you to give a kind of an overview. Does that sound right?
Uh, yes, yes, I'll get those to you before the meeting tomorrow.
Okay. So then um. My theory for content for tomorrow would be. Just a super high level review of. Uh, some of the underlying goals, uh, like we did at the beginning of the previous. Um, presentation, uh, public, public hearing presentation. So again, talking about mixed use and um. Diverse housing and and the, the character of the, of the corridor in terms of development patterns, et cetera, what we're shooting for. And I'll, I'll sort of take the two pronged approach of talking again about uh. Mixed use and typologies and density. At a high level and, and talking about that sort of development of parcels as well as the impact on streetscapes. And I've selected just a couple of these because we shared these last time, but I am talking points about, you know, um. The quality of the, the architectural, you know, streetscape here. Uh, and then just, you know, a stone's throw up the block, um. The difference here with the, the, the larger setback uh with landscaping in front and. The height of the building and how that relates to the street section and, you know, obviously. Um, very different sets of variables, but I think just to sort of tee up. Thoughts about what we're, you know, striving for along the corridor. So that was sort of a preamble and then I was going to remind people that we had done these test fits um. And but say that, um, you know, we had focused back in twenty twenty two largely on doing. Larger aggregated parcels, uh, such as parcel four here where we had the two large mixed use buildings. And even uh parcel three, which has the D one automotive on the corner. We had done a, a couple of different alt, you know, alternatives that had looked at combining three or four sites here. So um, just sort of in talking through, you know, we, we had. We had shared some of these, you know, this is testing the, the dimensional criteria for potential larger sites. But understanding that that is much less likely a scenario than. The possibility of. You know, um. Sort of more of a piecemeal um infilling of, of various parcels that are existing parcels today. Owners who have existing parcels who are not going to be doing land acquisition but. Want to develop their quarter acre or half acre parcel as it exists today. And. So my goal is to, you know, touch on what we learned from the larger ones, but then. I now have five new studies uh on five sites that we identified. Which include the town pantry site. Uh, the Bagels and Brew building. The D one automotive, you see here, and then moving up to just north of Swan Street and Andrea's Pizza Site. Uh, and then uh we chose one across from the Russell Hill Building, the Pierce Insurance um parcel. And these were chosen for any number of reasons, everything from, you know, what, what will be the impact of taking a strip center that is. Seventy something feet away from the street edge. And what will that, you know, look like? What, what can you do on the site from a test fit perspective and what, what's the visualization look like? Uh, to perhaps, uh, you know, adaptive really, adaptively reusing an existing building like. The Bagels and Brew, um, uh, to thinking about um. Sites that have really challenging um. Geometries to them, to the, the parcels like the Andrea's Pizza Site and also has really interesting topography with a, dropping off ten feet on the back of the site. So each one of these, I think it was chosen for a particular reason. And so I'm just going to really quickly run through. Um, what, uh, what we learned and, and essentially showing that. It, it confirms that the dimensional criteria with maybe one or two little things that I want to raise. it, it confirms that the dimensional criteria with maybe one or two little things that I want to raise after this. Um, I think work really well, both for the larger aggregated sites that we'd been looking at two years ago to now imagining that they actually are quite impactful for the smaller existing sites that are from between a quarter acre and a half acre. So does that sound okay? Um, as a starting point here, um. So, uh, I'm just, I'll really quickly run through some of the graphics I have here, and I think in some cases we can knock off one or two of these, but just to introduce the town pantry site, um, in each case, I'll start the te, you know, the, uh, the study with a plan or a set of plans that are, that is the test fit study that I've done. And it shows how the building in this case is getting right up to the North Main Street Edge. It has retail on the front with a residential lobby. It has parking underneath. And this has basically been built, this test fit, so that it accommodates, you know, the open space requirements, it accommodates, uh, the parking based on, uh, what we have going in the, in the E one, which is the point seven five per dwelling unit. Uh, so I've, I've sort of maximized what I could get on the site in terms of parking in a, in a reasonable way, and I've sort of backed into what is essentially a three and a, a half-story, um, uh, mixed-use project here, uh, that sort of checks all the boxes based on the, on the bylaw. So then I've got some very, uh, you know, simple graphics of the, the model. This is sort of the before condition. And then here is, uh, an example of that test fit plans we were just looking at. And you can see how the building gets out to the, the street edge here. Um, I, in each case, I'm gonna have a, a block, uh, of, of comments that shows why this couldn't happen today based on today's bylaw. And so what the new bylaw allows you to do. And in many cases, it's related to height, for example, three floors, forty-five feet in the G B D two today. This is a three and a half story version, uh, and, uh, you know, things like setbacks, the parking requirements are a huge factor, um, and on all of these. And, uh, you know, if you had to do two spaces per dwelling unit here, you know, you're looking at, um, you know, with twenty, with twenty-three dwelling units, you're looking at, you know, forty-six spaces just for residential plus the retail. So you, it just wouldn't be viable under the, under the current parking, uh, requirements. And other things will, will, uh, would be tripped, like you wouldn't be able to build this based on this, uh, the one point oh F A R limit today. And of course, there's the issue of, of uses, um, um, with mixed-use development with greater than four dwelling units not, not allowed anyway. So, um, so I've got, this is a, a second image here that, that drops in, that proposed project that, uh, was on the adjacent site. I don't know that we need to do this or not because that uh, uh, I, it looked like it was gonna happen when we started the project in twenty twenty-two, but it's still out there. So maybe we just don't need to even have this in here, but um, in any case, I'd love your feedback on that. Um, so then I, I have a, a couple more images here getting down onto the street and you can see the, the town pantry setback, you know, seventy-odd feet. And then here, slightly different angle because it's hard to match the model with Google Earth, but, um, but you can see here, um, the sense of the definition of the streetscape now and the activation by having the building up on the front instead of the parking lot. So that's, that's an example of, of one of the five, um, um, test fits that I would like to share. And again, it's on a, uh, an existing site, um, and it shows that the, the new proposed dimensional criteria really do, um, allow for, um, I think the type of mixed-use development we're, we're targeting here. So now we'll go across the street and look at the, uh, Bagel and Brew Building. Uh, and I guess in each case, I also have uh, some examples of similarly scaled buildings as the test fit. So this, I guess, is sort of the last slide from the previous um, go around here. You can see, you know, different ideas about style, but, uh, again, ground floor retail, residential above, and a couple of different iterations of that. Um, okay, so across the street here, existing building, uh, how to, how to, uh, you know, reuse that, expand on it. Um, and this test fit looks at keeping residential, I'm sorry, keeping retail frontage largely on the ground floor on the street. And then adding a residential lobby with two floors of, uh, units above. Uh, so repositioning the second floor and adding another floor on top of that. And you can see this results in, uh, eight dwelling units. Uh, and a considerable amount of, uh, well, a street front retail, but also the commercial in the back because the building drops off, so it's two levels. Uh, and this is all fully parked under the ratios we're, we're proposing. It is interesting to note that the open area in, in, this is an existing building, is, uh, forty-five percent and the lot coverage is approaching fifty-five percent. Uh, which was sort of a first clue to me that maybe we should look at the open area, uh, percentages again, and, uh, we can circle back to that in another test fit. But from a visualization point of view, here is a look at, uh, sort of the repositioned, uh, building with the two levels of, of residential above the ground floor and now together with the, um, the town pantry proposal on the right-hand side, you can see now you really are getting quite an attractive, um, and I think appropriately scaled streetscape, uh, right sort of at the, the threshold to the C B D here. So I, I found that exciting personally, but, um, obviously would, would welcome any feedback, um. Why this couldn't happen today, again, parking requirements, uh, and other sort of issues related to dimensional criteria and, uh, and use, uh, factors. So here's a couple of examples, uh, from Newton Highlands and from Plymouth, uh, Center that I think are are sort of examples of, of what that, you know, would feel like, uh, with the ground floor retail on a couple of levels. In this case, three small levels, uh, of residential above, um, so I think that's, uh, you know, has a pretty nice, uh, feel to it and an appropriate scale, I would argue, for this, um, location. So now I'm just gonna shift north here. I, I hope I'm not going too deliberately, but I just kind of wanted to give you guys enough of the details to understand the purpose here. We'll shift up to the D one automotive site here, obviously, uh, lots of challenging existing conditions from parking on the corner, uh, to the extended curb cuts, to just the relationship of this one-story building to the street and all those things that we would like to try to remedy. This was an old test fit that you will recall is one of a couple of different alternatives we looked at of kind of a mixed-use, um, approach with residential above, and you'll, you'll notice that it's actually extends about four lots. So I really wanted to test out what would happen if you just limited this to the D one automotive site. So you can see the plan here now, um, again, entering off a Clark, uh, retail lining the front, residential entry, parking in the rear adequate for the residential and for the retail. And you can see two levels, uh, well, really two and a half stories of residential above. So the upper units, uh, would be really kind of like a loft style. Um, and, um, so you're getting eight units, um, and, um, the, the nice retail frontage. And again, this is a confirmation to me that the parking ratios at point seven five are really what make this viable. Uh, you can see we're, we're okay on the open area. And, uh, so anyway, um, I, I felt like this is, was convincing in terms of the numbers that the point seven five is really, um, the right thing to facilitate this type of development, particularly on smaller sites. So from a visualization point of view, here's the new, uh, mixed-use, uh, block that's just on the D one automotive. Again, creating, you know, a nice street frontage on both streets here and being kind of respectful and staying away from the, the, the residential neighborhoods behind. Similar issues here related to why this couldn't happen today, the three-floor limit. Uh, and, and all these other variables and especially parking, um, again. So, um, I, I thought that was a here's a street level view of that. Um, oh, Brian, I see you have your hand raised. You want to interject?
I did. If you go back to the previous slide, just, I, I, I know you're running with this, but where you have, I know we had, don't have F A R in the mixed-use district, but I think it might, because it says F A R one point oh limit. Um, it might help if this said what the F A R would be for that building. Um, thus why the one limit would actually stop it.
Right. So you can see, I can, I, I'll tell you right now, but I, I can add that to the graphic. I think that's right. So if the total square footage here is looking like it's approaching sixteen thousand and the site is eleven thousand, so we're looking at about a one point five in this particular concept. Uh, but I think that's a really helpful comment, and I will make sure that, let me make a note to add that. Um, because they do range up to around two in these test fits, which is interesting, and they don't get much more than that on these smaller sites. Um, and again, these, I'm gonna go back one more second here. We're looking still at quarter acre sites here now, um, so we're, we'll have some that are, are larger, actually maybe first two was a little larger, but in any case, um, street level view, um, and then followed by a precedent image. And so that's intended to kind of give people reassurance that, uh, this is a typology that exists today and it's, it's can be very attractive and, um, um, mixed-use, et cetera, et cetera. So. Um. So now this is a, a, an intriguing study here. This is, um, moving up to the corner of Swanton and North Main and looking at Andrea's site. And again, we had done a study at one point that looked at combining three sites here, um, but limiting it just to the Andrea's Pizza Site, um, was, was really interesting in terms of what it revealed. Um, because it's an extremely unusual shaped site here and my, my red line is a little bit off. I will have to fix that, but in any case, just wanted to highlight that this is the shape of the site, which is essentially triangular. Um, and, uh, you know, at about a quarter acre. Uh, but this is a place where I think you would argue, or I would argue that it would be nice to have as much street definition as possible, which is where the issues of setbacks come in again. I noticed you guys had, um, had gone back to thinking about wanting to have a ten-foot side setback on, uh, some of the parcels or some of the sub-districts to the north. And I think this is an example of where that would really, you know, make this, um, much more difficult to achieve. So we can circle back to that, but I think what this study shows is you can get a nice, um, again, quite a bit of continuous retail along the front here with just the residential lobby poking through. Uh, and then up above the blue here, you can see seven units on a floor. So I, as you'll see in the visualization, I've got fourteen units because I've got two floors of this typical upper, uh, residential floor. And what makes this site, you know, fascinating is that you're ten feet below in the rear here. So you can actually drive right into a, um, a parking garage that would be right below the, uh, the main, uh, street level on North Main. So that seems fairly straightforward, um. And, uh, you're, you're basically entering on grade in the back. So I've, I've been able to get seventeen spots here. Uh, and interestingly, the way the, the dimensional table works now, once you cross Swanton Street, you're up to a one per dwelling unit, uh, parking ratio. So we're now getting to requiring fourteen spaces for the residential and the retail's a little bit more, uh, as well. So we're up to twenty required here, whereas if it was the point seven five, um, we would have it covered with the, uh, the seventeen spaces that are shown. So, but I think, so that's something to consider is whether or not you might, um, either allow someone to, you know, through the site plan review process, uh, to request some relief on that down to maybe point seven five. Uh, when you're in one of the one per dwelling unit, um, sub-districts. Uh, or it can also be solved through, um, submitting a, a shared parking, uh, matrix to, which, 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 you know, would only require three spaces, uh, in order to, 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 you know, fully park, uh, this particular program. So, um, this is now a, looking at about a twenty-one thousand plus total square footage on a, on a, uh, ten, you know, ten thousand square foot plus site. So we're approaching a two point oh F A R here, Brian. Um, but the one interesting thing is because of the shape of the site, it doesn't have that typical rectilinear site, which allows you to have more open area across the back. Um, we're looking at an open area here of only thirty-two point six percent. And to me, this is saying, if we have a fifty percent open area requirement, um, that doesn't have any flexibility to it. It's possible that on some of these smaller sites that have unusual geometries that we might be limiting the, the true development capabilities, uh, or possibilities on a site like this. So I guess I was gonna encourage that maybe we revisit the open area and we can circle back to this again. But if, if not completely changing it, just again, sort of saying maybe through the site plan review process. You know, uh, if a site is a certain size, uh, and they're doing a mixed-use project, you have the right to request going down to a thirty percent open space. So, um, these are the, just a couple of small things that were uncovered by these test fits, but I, I feel like the, the mixed-use program here feels appropriate to me in terms of the, 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 the building that it's yielding from a massing perspective. And this is a very prominent site when you're coming up the corridor with Bellino Park on the right just before it and right at the corner of Swanton, and I just feel like this is a site where it makes sense to have a certain, you know, um, mass of a building with a, maybe a corner expression of some sort. Uh, and, uh, so this does not feel like inappropriate, um, uh, type of development for this kind of site here. So, and then this little diagram here shows you on the backside, uh, how you can access the garage below. It does result in a, if, uh, sort of a four-story, uh, reading in the back. So that's it, it's, it's a unique site in that way, I mean, as is the, uh, Bagel and Brew Building, that, that also has a, a lower site in the back, but I guess I just feel in terms of its role on the corridor, uh, particularly because it's prominent location, that this is an appropriate scale for this site. Uh, and then one more rendering here. Um, it shows you more of a street level view. Uh, and again, reviewing why this can't be built today under today's guidelines, which is now the G B D three, now that we've crossed Swan Street. You know, there's a large fifteen-foot front setback required, the parking requirements are two spaces per dwelling unit. Uh, the F A R, we just talked about, this is closer to a two. Uh, height limit has, the, the, the way this is defined today, uh, wouldn't work, um, but it does under our new, uh, proposed. And of course, and now in a G B D three, you can't even, uh, do retail. So, uh, anyway, there's a number of things about the new bylaw that um, will facilitate something like this, and I think that's good. Here's a couple of images of similarly scaled buildings in Cushing Square in Belmont, again, with a couple of levels of retail, of residential above retail. Um, and, uh, on a sort of a corner location. So uh, I'm just, I'm trying to help people visualize what that might actually look like it, because they exist all, all around, uh, the greater Boston area. Uh, and then the last one, um, just to go through very quickly is the, the Pierce Insurance, uh, site here at nine thirty-four North Main, across from the Russell Hill Building. This is a tricky site, um, in that it's, uh, only about seventy feet wide. You can see here the existing street view, and this is the place where we have a lot of parking uh, coming all the way out to the street. And unfortunately, it's, you know, contiguous with a large parking area. Uh, just next to it there, so that makes for, um, I think, an undesirable, um, juxtaposition. Um, and I looked at a couple of different ways of doing a test fit here. It's a tricky site, as I said, because it's only seventy feet wide. Um, and what I ended up with was a building that has a retail frontage. Uh, and then you go sort of, uh, you drive underneath the upper stories, uh, of this building. It's, it's a little bit finicky, but uh, it does allow you to get as much mass up on the street as possible, uh, on the two upper floors. And it, and it gives you, uh, the fifty percent lot coverage. It has eight dwelling units and uh, it checks all the boxes in terms of maximizing the potential of the site here. You have to have enough clearance, obviously, for a fire truck to get in there, which we do, but those are crazy little details. But I just wanted to show you this image on the upper right, which is a site in Newton Highlands, right along, uh, the M B T A line. That is what is happening a lot now when developers are coming in and trying to do a, like a four-unit building. This is a four-unit building. And because when sites are, have a, a, a narrow frontage and a, and a, and a much larger depth, what ends up happening is, ooh, excuse me, uh, what ends up happening is um, you end up having one side of the site that's a big driveway with entrances into four garages. And all the front doors are all lined up along this edge of the, of the house. And there's really just nothing more than a sort of a ceremonial gable that fronts on the street here. And so all the front yards of everybody's, you know, unit is, are this side of the, of the, um, uh, of the building. Of the building, so it's just not, it's not, you know, really orienting the building to the street in a, in a, in an urban way. And. So this is a four, a four unit building that requires about ninety feet of width to really make that happen, but by the time you add the driveway and the yards and all that stuff in. So this was a different approach to that, trying to get as much mass up on the street as possible. You can see here, a rendering, looking sort of to the northwest and getting the retail frontage up on the street. And again, this is moving forward from all the other buildings, you know, that are up and down this side of the street. And not to mention what's happening in the Russell Hill Building here, but. It's gonna be something sticking, sticking out for a number of years, you know, while these things slowly get repositioned and begin to follow the bylaw and so. You know, up and down the corridor, you're gonna have, you know, examples, you're gonna have, things aren't always gonna be aligned until, over time, you'll eventually get the definition of the streetscape that you're. You're shooting for. So this is just another example from Waverly Square in Belmont with ground floor retail and. You know, a vernacular that is, you know, sort of. Consistent with the residential neighborhoods behind, so that's could be.
Is that, is that a new building?
This one?
Yeah.
No, I think it's, it's been there for years, this actually.
I mean, is it, is it, is it a hundred and twenty years old or is it? Twenty years old?
Well, I think, Nick, that it was probably renovated in the last twenty five years, but. But it has some, you know, qualities to it that suggests it's been there for, for quite some time. I would, I would, if I had to guess, I'd say. Early nineteen hundreds or something, but based on Newton, whatever, but I don't know for a hundred percent sure. I'm sure the storefront with the Dunkin Donuts has been newly done or fifteen, within the last fifteen to twenty years, maybe. So that's, that's it for those five test fits and I, I just, I was encouraged by. You know, what, what came out of that, I, I, it, it, to me, it reinforced that the dimensional criteria are by and large. Where we want them to be, which was great, given where we are in the process. But I think it's also a much more realistic view for people to think, okay, well. You know, what's the likelihood that someone's gonna come in and buy four adjacent parcels and put a big multifamily project on it, but here. Shows you what you can do, you know, with a, you know, maybe a half acre lot or a little bit less and. And that each one, you know, when you think about something happening maybe on the bagels and brew and then across the street on the town pantry. Then you start to begin to, you know, get a vision for what the, the quarter could be. So here's a, the last thing I have here is just a sort of a summary sheet and I was, I was trying to. Figure out, you know, how detailed we wanna get. In our presentation tomorrow night and how much detail, I mean, I think we don't wanna get lost in the weeds here, but. If you had sort of this summary here that's saying in general, what we're trying to do is we're allowing four and a half stories under certain conditions. On the southern section of the quarter where we want the more density and closer to the C B D. And then as we move to the north. Maybe three and a half story max, and I know you guys have three stories in a few. Of the sub districts, which I would also like to talk about, because I really think that half story really does a lot for roofscapes and architectural expression, that we can talk about that. Open area. Across the whole corridor is, you know, fifty percent mix for mixed use and sixty percent for residential, which is what it is today. The residential piece. And I think that I would argue that, like, like on the Andreas Pizza site, we might wanna say on some smaller lots, you know, if they have strange geometries and things like that, there should be an ability. Maybe for half acre or less to allow for a little bit less open space, if the, if the project feels like it's checking a lot of boxes. So that we can discuss. Max billing footprint is a twenty, again, I think for some of the larger. Potential lots down to the south, if someone were to aggregate, you might allow twenty five, I think we've had, had at that number in some. At some points during our conversations over the last couple of years. So these are just, these are just ideas that I'm throwing out, that are sort of minor, almost like footnote. Potential things to the chart that could be dealt with during the site plan review. And then the last two, the frontage build out, we had it seventy five percent. For lots that are greater than eighty feet of frontage, I have found in my test fits that sometimes that's a little bit tricky to get. All the way up to seventy five percent for any number of reasons, from site access to just the geometry of the sites, et cetera. So again, we might consider for a mixed use project, allowing a little bit less, as long as it's, 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 you know, meeting the spirit of what we're trying to do. And then lastly, the parking, and this is just sort of, again, I think for the, the public hearing is a, is probably enough information, just in terms of. In general, south section of the quarter, we're, we're doing the point seven five. Interestingly, it's, it's the E one, W one and W two, and then when you get north of Swanton. We're up to one point O and as I sort of mentioned when we were looking at the Andreas Pizza site. You might give some relief to that for mixed use on some challenging sites, but again, that can also be done through. The shared parking concept, so. That's sort of where I, where I was building things towards for tomorrow, I guess I'll stop there. And we can look at these comments if you want, or. Just open the conversation up.
I think the presentation has gone in a really good direction, I like the visualizations and I like that you brought it down to the size of the parcels that we're looking at. If it's possible to lighten the road. Like some of the renderings almost look, when you show the pictures of Newton and you show the pictures of the other ones, they look so bright because the sunlight's coming in. So visually, I think it's, it's sort of like it's broken up a little, that's the, that's the only visual, I mean, I love your renderings, I think you do such beautiful work. And, or even just interest, I think the way you're interspersing it with pictures of, of the buildings. Is, is great, I think those look good, and I would remind people that there will still be a review process. You know, where we'll negotiate where the traffic comes and goes, you know, those sorts of things, so that we make sure that it's working for the neighborhoods, because I imagine anyone on Canal Street will see that. Parking all coming and going from Canal Street and say, whoa, 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 like, this is gonna be a lot of traffic on the street, so remind them that that will be a conversation about how it will work best for the neighborhood. But it will keep it, everything from backing up on North Main.
Yeah, well, I mean, that, I think, you mean Clark Street, where we had the D one automotive one?
Yes, sorry, Clark Street.
So, I mean, yeah, so that's, that's not, I mean, it's not a huge parcel, it's not a huge, a lot of, not a lot of coming and going, but. Like, obviously, the, the, the priority was to try to make the streetscape on North Main as pedestrian friendly as possible and. Sort of minimizing those conflict spots, so, yeah, but I hear, I hear you.
Yeah, do you have, you have your hand up?
Uh, yeah, Michael, I really like where you went with this, so. I, I second Curious' comments about that. I'm looking at, I, I, I think you pointed out that we do need some flexibility. I, is, is the only, you know, the question I have, is the site plan review the right place for that in terms of, I don't know what's allowed under site plan review? Typically, you know, when we look at it, we say we can put reasonable conditions, but that doesn't mean that we can actually. We typically haven't relaxed things, so I just don't know what the legalities are in terms of. Whether we do that through site plan review or whether we have to go through a special permit.
Well, I missed probably a question for a land use attorney, but I would say, my guess would be, it would be helpful to have it in the footnote as something that is a possibility and then. Is that, Taylor, do you have any thoughts on that or?
No.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think, you know, part of it could be that, you know, we, we. We allow a range. And so, you know, we will give a waiver, I mean, these are really waivers, right, so we'd have to come up with some criteria for the waivers, which may be granted. The other thing I was thinking of, this is also something where. We could tie in, say, you know, an extra unit of inclusionary housing on the, say, the Andreas Pizza site. If it makes sense, if they could, if they need relax. For the parking, we could say, yeah, kick in something, so there's somehow that sort of flexibility to do things like that would be welcome. And I don't know how we put that into the, into the code. Other than that, I really, I, again, I, like Harry said, I really like your focus on these, these individual small lots, which will probably turn over much faster than large ones, so thank you for that.
Brian?
So I agree, I particularly like one of the. Images you had early on in the presentation, which, in the southern portion, which had. A potential building on one side of the road and on the other side of the road, sort of see the streetscape of two across the street, I thought that looked. I thought that looked really nice and I, I, I agree with what everybody else said, that. The, the large consolidated lots are fascinating and I like them, but. This might be more likely what we're gonna see, so it's kind of nice to see that here. As far as the. Parking. At like Andreas Pizza, that lot. I start to think to myself that, and, and, and I, I, I don't know how you would do it if it's by special permit or site plan review to give a reduction. But by the time you get up there, you're a decent walk from the transit station downtown, I mean, that's just beyond. Which I think is probably the reason, a rationale why it's one, one point O there, not point seven five. So I, I think that if we were to give a reduction to point seven five. When you get that far away from M B T A, we have to also start thinking about what is that gonna do on the side roads? Are, are, are people gonna still have one car per unit and they're just gonna park on the side road? Certainly further away you get, if you get up towards the Woburn line, we, we can be sure that. Most of those units are gonna have one car per unit, and if we only allow point seven five, they're gonna be parking on the street. That's right on the edge, so your argument there makes sense, but I just don't know if I wanna generalize that for the whole way, I, I don't know. Just thinking out loud, as this is the first time I saw it, so just thinking out loud.
One only thing I would say, Brian, is. I think. The developer is going to say, I either can sell a unit. Without a one or, or I can't, and I think it'll sort of, it's only a minimum, so it's kind of gonna hopefully self sort itself out, but I. I, I understand you're, you're concerned about the impacts on the neighboring streets, so that's valid.
I will just, I just add that we, we see in town, other developments which don't have enough parking for the residents and there are. Certainly overflow into the streets and there are people coming before the select board asking if they can park on the streets overnight in the wintertime, it certainly is something that we. We, we don't wanna accidentally create a problem that twenty years down the road, they're coming to the select board asking for relief on the street, which it doesn't mean we shouldn't do it this way, I just. Just wanna, having seen it recently at a select board meeting, I wanna be thinking about it now, not twenty years from now.
That, that's where, like with the Andreas Pizza test fit, you know. I think you can make a convincing case that there's enough parking for a shared, you know, mixed use approach there, because. There are fourteen units and there were seventeen spaces and, you know, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I wanna piggyback on, on what Brian just said about the parking, I think one, one thing that's different about this site than perhaps other sites is. It is on a bus line, which granted only shows up every hour, I think of M B T A is eventually gonna put another one. And it's about a, it's about a ten minute walk to downtown, so it's still just, it's walkable. But I think the fact that it's on a bus line might give you a little more flexibility in terms of needing fewer parking spaces. There are certainly a number of people in my neighborhood, I live right across the street from it, who regularly walk downtown, so. Just a little more context, that's it, thanks.
Yeah, I mean, I, I hope we end up seeing alternatives to. You know, alternative options for, you know, shared vehicles or. Developers responding to changing transportation needs, but in February, I doubt you have a lot of neighbors walking downtown, we just, we have to make sure people can. Can get around, I. I think that will be, you know, a, a discussion we'll have parcel by parcel and there will have to be creative solutions that are offered before we reduce parking, because I really, I, I know it will be a significant burden on the neighborhoods if we. Go below at least one per unit. But, you know, we have to figure out how to get, how to, how to get the changes we need. Other, other things we need to address from the dimensional table. The half story. You had requested that we make a half story standard across all districts because it would allow for roof. Forms that are more, you know, sort of attractive.
I, I wondered about it, I think, particularly if you're asking for, you're, you're hoping for some mixed use on the ground floor, I think that. Half story also helps. Make that more viable, but I understand the sensitivity of massing to. Those neighborhoods of the west, so I understand how you got to where you got to, but.
And so that, with that, that would not. You're suggesting we keep the height at the suggested fifty two feet, but we add a half story, or we're suggesting we adjust the height?
I think I probably would adjust it to this, this three and a half, you know, version here is fifty six, so it might be a difference of a. It varies depending on the thing, but.
We have.
Yeah, go ahead.
We have the three and a half stories set for E two and E three and we have the, the mixed use max height at sixty feet, so we'd have to add that eight feet to the west districts, right?
For the pitch roof one, yeah. Well.
Thoughts, folks?
I, I guess for me. I, I really appreciate that you can make a more attractive looking structure with a half. Story. On the other hand, one of the sort of goal a, and promises of this. Was that it would be sort of with the scale of the neighborhood as you come from Woburn. And as you get closer to the center, it would get bigger and bigger, and I feel like if we were to go down this road, which I, I totally appreciate. We're suddenly. Saying basically there's two sizes, there's right down by the core and then there's the side up towards Woburn and. I, I worry a little bit, just practically speaking, that that might turn off some people to supporting this, because it no longer has that sort of increasing scale as you go. But then again, I totally appreciate what you're saying is that those buildings could be better looking buildings if we allow that half story, so. It's a catch twenty two, I don't know which is better. I, I do think we promised sort of scale increasing as we get to town and or decreasing as we get out of town.
Yeah, I share your dilemma, Brian.
Yep, I agree with that.
But it does seem that if we are, if we do wanna keep, if we, we wanna stick to that. I don't know if it was a promise or it's certainly something we wanted at the, the lower scale, we have to keep it at three.
Okay, I was just raising it as a. An issue. There were a, a couple of other related things, not to. Just here there by any stretch, but like, I noticed that the side setbacks in these. Everything except for E one and W one got. Well. Let's see, front setbacks and side setbacks are, were all changed to, to bump them up again, and I guess I'm, I'm. Not so sure about that, but I'm wondering what the thinking was there.
The, I'm sorry, the front setbacks and the side setbacks, your question is?
Well, I, I think that, like, for example, here, you know, all these other. Sub districts got moved, the side setbacks for, for mixed use got moved up to ten feet, so on both sides, that's. You know, there's a, a number of. Test fits that we've done, that, that, that would. Not maximize the potential of the site in, in some, in a way that I think is still very contextual, but. So, I guess I just, I know, that seemed like that was a change to me than what I had recalled, and I just wondered where that, what the concern was there to put that side setback back. And, and also the front setback, instead of, like, for examples, example, we have a twelve foot sidewalk mandated now. And so, like with Andreas Pizza site, which I think has about a nine foot sidewalk today, it would already get a little bit wider, but. To then require another five feet on top of that, seems, I, I don't understand that one either.
Can we? Can, can we put them back?
Can we, can we put them back?
We can do anything we want.
So the, the five foot setback was. Meant to setback buildings that were able to get very tall, is that right? So we would end up with.
No, that's a different issue, I think, to the south where we were, we were gonna. Have a ten to fifteen foot setback for buildings that were over four, four or five, four and a half stories.
Right, right. So the side setback was because we were imagining buildings straight to the property line, building after building, and it felt very congested, so. I I see what you're saying, if we put these side setbacks next to each other, now we're creating like more relief between the buildings than we were aiming for. But the the discussion was sort of like, if, you know, if there doesn't have to be. Um, you know, there will have to be traffic access, but it could end up being behind the building and then we're building sort of, you know.
See, see, no two cases are are gonna be the same, like um, there'll be certain areas where you'll want. You know, almost a party wall type condition like you have around Andrea's Pizza and the the bank across the street. And then there'll be other conditions where there'll be some spacing between the buildings and we like, like around Pierce in the in that area, but. Uh, but the problem is if you do ten foot required si- side setbacks on both sides, and then you also have to have a twenty foot access point. You're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to reach the uh seventy-five percent um frontage buildout.
Wait, I feel like we were working driveways into the side setback in that conversation. Who remembers this better than I do?
I think we were trying to work driveways into there.
Yeah, but even then, you have a minimum of thirty feet of uh unbuildable front automatically. If you have town on each side and you need to have, one of those has to be a twenty foot access point potentially.
Yeah, I don't think we were looking at, we were, we were examining one side of the property, trying to imagine how you would accommodate a road. And then, and then how you would perhaps buffer, one of the things in the. Is that we do have to kind of plan for res- for purely residential where you might have residential on the first floor. And so you would like to have some sort of a buffer, cause if you have like a a zero setback next to a completely residential building. That could be pretty horrible, and I think one of the buildings we looked at was um up on um North Main. What the, we we would know in in town is where the old Scruple Salon was. And the, there's essentially a a three foot setback between the residential units and the. And the fence, so it's just not really conducive to good residential. Although actually that is a first for commercial, now that I think of it.
Yeah, I mean, w- w- we are aiming for more density and I, I I mean. I I I kind of feel, I mean, Michael has the experience in this area. And. Will be able to have driveways, I think.
You've got, you can keep the ten foot side setbacks for residential and others, I'm just thinking for the mixed use. But.
Oh, yeah, right, so if the neighboring building is mixed use, it would be zero, and if the neighboring building was residential, it would be ten. And and that would accommodate, so the mixed use would have the residential on the second floor, so they. You know, they might just look over, yeah, I mean, it's.
I mean, there are, there are residentially units that in more urban areas that have. Less room between the buildings.
Yeah, but they're horrible to live in.
Yeah, and they're not the field people move to Winchester for.
I mean, not if you're in a city, I mean.
Yeah, but we're.
Not horrible, I mean.
Oh, well, I guess it depends where you live, I mean, I. I spent some time in Somerville and there were some. You you don't want to always have to, you know, be able to shake your hands with your, shake hands with your neighbor, it's a little alleyway.
We're providing a diversity of housing type home.
Yes, so I will, I will, I will go on record as saying, I am fine with with removing the. Side setbacks for um mixed use.
I, can I, can I take a minute to clarify? So if we have side access to the rear parking lot, so if there's a driveway between a mixed use building. And a residential building, do we then have a sidewalk and a ten foot side setback, or does ten feet accommodate one-way traffic?
Ten feet would accommodate one-way traffic. The setback just, we don't, we don't, I don't think we require, yeah, we can put a road in.
The driveway can be in the setback. I feel like that's how we ended up with the mixed use ten foot is we were allowing for driveway on the side. So I I agree with you, if it's mixed use next to mixed use or other. Zero is fine, and again, I would remind people that it will probably end up being somehow setback. Because you do have to get to the back of the building, so that's where the parking has to be.
Yeah, and there are other ways in as well, but. Uh, and and then so for the front, do you want to get rid of the zero lot line? Thing, even though we've got a twelve foot sidewalk, like you're gonna say Andrea's would need to be seventeen feet back from the the curb edge. As opposed to the nine feet it is today, that doesn't seem like that's conducive to maximizing the site, but.
I thought, I thought we were saying it was a, I thought, I want to say the ma- I want to say the front setback was meant to be a maximum. We, I mean, we have a maximum listed, but I thought the five foot, yeah, I thought even that, because we knew. We knew there was gonna be a twelve foot sidewalk, and so I think in my head.
So we had the zero and ten, we talked about in the E one and W one, and then it it just showed up as five and ten on the other ones, and I just was curious why, but.
So, um, so if we have to supposedly somewhere we have a mandate twelve foot setbacks. Sidewalks, right? I don't know.
It's in the text.
Okay, so um I think part of the. Part of the issue was again, let's say you have a purely residential unit, you would probably like it to be set back some from. The sidewalk even, because that would provide you some relief.
And you can, up to fifteen feet.
Yes, but you're not requ- yeah, I see, so.
Right, so we allow a maximum, but we have the ability to go to zero if. You know, if if that's appropriate, I mean, we're not being a little more flexible. A higher density paradigm that's a little more urban than maybe we've been thinking about before.
So my only, my only concern is that by putting in a minimum of zero, by right, someone could come in and say. Hey, I'm gonna put it at zero, and we look at this thing and we say, gosh, that really should be pushed back a bit, and we don't have any levers to say that.
So a range, a minimum and a maximum?
So I'm just, that's the only thing is, thinking that this has to be, I agree with everything everyone said, but this has to be somewhat site specific. How do we put in some flexibility?
Just just put in, put in a minimum residential setback, that have the residential be five to fifteen. And have the mixed use be zero to ten.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, who is officially taking these notes so that we don't?
I I've got them.
Okay.
So I I'm comfortable with that, I think that the side setback, I feel like we spent a long time talking about this. And it, at the risk of sounding like I'm coming back to the same argument, um, I think it makes sense to have zero side setbacks. In E one and W one and maybe even W two. Um, but again, I guess I would go to the same argument I used before, that as we get further away from town. We're talking about the scale and the distance between the buildings and it, you know, it would be. As you come in from Woburn, it's smaller buildings farther apart, as you get closer, they get closer together and bigger and closer together and bigger. Um, sort of like, I realize that that might be a hundred years before all those buildings get built out, but if we imagined everything built out. Um, exactly as we allow it from Woburn to um to Gilling. I imagine sort of this growth of closer together, taller as you get closer, um, so I guess I. I I'm okay with um the side use mix in W two, which is still sort of pretty close, being less. Um, a- and and maybe it just gets bigger as we go further out, I understand that that might mess with. Those lots that are further out that are also smaller now have a bigger setback. But I think that's also what we're trying to get at, I think, a little bit, and 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 correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, let me, let me offer another way to think about it, um, your bylaw today has these village. Center overlays, which is really about creating nodal development in certain locations, so there's a, there is a type of. Retail use that's happening way up at the Woburn line and there's something happening at Swanton, uh. And so I don't think it's in that, in terms of the use, I don't think it's necessarily. Um, a progress and a progression away from retail, I think we're trying to make the corridor more of a mixed use corridor, so. I can understand from a scale perspective, you you know, sticking to, you know, your height issues and things like that, but. From a use perspective, uh and and then I think, I I don't know, I. There's lots of ways to think about it.
So I wasn't thinking of use perspective, um, I was thinking of as far as. What the streetscape looks like further north. Which are smaller buildings farther apart from each other, and as you get closer, they get larger buildings closer to each other. Um, uh, not based on use, because we're trying to encourage mixed use on this whole um corridor, but we also want the scale as you get. Um, further up into um E uh E three and W three and W four. To also be similar to the scale of the neighborhoods behind there, which I think was, I mean, I think that's what we, why we got there. And I think we could be convinced to go away from that, but I thought that's sort of where we came from again, um the sort of progressive idea, which maybe I've. Maybe I'm holding on to too tightly, because that's sort of my vision of the whole thing, is that sort of progression, and maybe I'm I'm holding on too tightly for dear life.
But I I think with the, I think the, I think the more. Um, sort of hard numbers we put on the lot, the more we're gonna restrict. Our ability to sort of place things thoughtfully based on a butters. And I think if we're sort of like, then we must have these setbacks and these setbacks, you know, we may not be able to say. You know, this, this is next to this, you know, sort of, you know, I think we want to be able to move traffic access where, or. You know, parking access where we need to be able to, and I think the more lenient our setbacks are. The more leverage we're gonna have to sort of create the space that fits the parcel, and I I think that there's a risk when you put. So many, so many um, you know, sort of stringent parameters that that you're gonna sort of, you know. Give, give architects a Lego kit, and that's really limiting for what they're able to do.
No, I appreciate that.
I I mean, I see what you're saying, but I think a lot of these parcels are internal and they're gonna have to have side setbacks, because there's, you know, we we have a few that come in from a side street. But a lot of them are gonna naturally end up with that, and I I hesitate to sort of.
But, I I'm sorry, Carrie, but you're saying that they have to have a side setback, but what we're really doing with. The side setback constraints here is you're creating a a minimum, so if somebody.
That's what I'm saying, I think the minimum should be low, because.
Can we just get rid of the minimum and have it, have it be zero?
Yeah, and then if somebody needs to have access from the front, then they're just gonna, that's the way they're gonna develop it.
Exactly, I think, I think we need leverage to negotiate by parcels without having, and you also have to.
I mean, I I feel like we're spending a lot of time on this issue, I I don't know what left we have to do during the evening, I don't know how late I'm gonna stay. Beyond the end of the meeting, but I I I feel like, you know, um, you know, Michael is giving us a professional opinion. Uh, to achieve our goal of of certain, a certain amount of density. And I I think we need to, we need to come to a a decision. Uh, and and make sure that we cover everything that we've got to cover tonight, um, maybe we cover some next Monday morning.
How about a compromise, um, because this is by right, ten foot with zero. As as little as zero by special permit.
So. If I could um make another, take another look at this, for the mixed use developments. We're gonna need at least twenty feet for driveways. So that's already. Giving you essentially a ten foot setback on either side of the building or twenty feet on one side, and so.
For the driveway, do you need to give a setback, or are they allowed to put a driveway in?
They're allowed to put a driveway, they have to put a driveway somewhere.
Right, so even if it's zero minimum or whatever, they're gonna have.
It could be right up against the property line, but that's still a ten foot, that's at least a ten foot. I'm gonna call it a setback, but it's not technically a setback.
But you're also then requiring one on the other side, too.
No, I'm saying, no, I I'm for zero setback.
Oh, oh, good, okay.
I'm just saying that, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, if you, if you have zero setback. You're still going to have space between the buildings, because the mixed use will require. Two one-way driveways, so you're still gonna have spacing, it may not be symmetric. Depending upon how they choose to put the driveway in, but you're, you're gonna have that spacing, Brian, I'm just trying to come up a way of. Visualizing that you're not gonna have this solid wall of building, at least not in the middle of the block, because. You need to have twenty feet, and one hopes that they would share it, because otherwise we're gonna have this staccato. Pedestrian unfriendly lineup of driveways, but I think zero works. Because you're gonna, you're gonna have these driveways anyway.
Yeah, I'm I'm with you.
Okay, well, that's all I had.
And I need some final numbers from y'all. I need to know some final numbers to write it in for you, so for front setback, we're at zero minimum across the board.
Because we have twelve foot sidewalks.
And that side setback, sorry.
Wait, 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 we had five foot for residential.
Yeah, it was zero to, zero to ten for mixed use and five to fifteen for residential.
And then for side setbacks, we had. We had, what was our, what was her decision?
I think we went to zero because.
For mixed use.
For mixed use, it'll effectively be.
Zero min.
For mixed use, yep.
And do you care for residential?
We're gonna, I think we kept it at ten.
At ten, okay, all right, we're all set.
But Brian hasn't had a chance to say yay or nay to that.
Well, well, it seems to be three to one, so um, I'm not, it's not gonna be something that's gonna um cause me to want to dump the whole thing, so I I'm. I I would keep ten and allow as little as zero by special permit or some other way, um, but. We shall see, I I'm not. It's fine.
And one last clarification for height, it seemed like we had landed on W two, three and four, staying at three, is, do I have that right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think yes.
All right. And I think for the uh, the open space flexibility, maybe it's a question for. Your land use attorney, but maybe we can write it in the footnote or something to get flexibility there. Open area.
Um, if, uh, anything else for the dimensional table?
What was our decision about the, about, about uh open area, were we gonna move that down to fifty?
The, the comment that it looks like we're discussing is whether we allow thirty percent for the smaller lots. And then you want to, you're asking if we want to change mixed use open area to fifty percent, sorry?
Yeah.
I think if we can get that language, if we can determine whether this is negotiable via site plan review. Or something like that, I would feel more comfortable with putting it in there.
Yeah, it might be, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna open up another can of worms, is I don't recall if we have green space, or do we just have open space?
No, just open area.
Just open area.
Yeah.
Green space will be a condition of site plan review, but it's not gonna be a part of the the dimensional guidelines or the dimensional table.
So I I think this would be, if we're essentially done with the dimensional table, I think this would be the right time. I think this would be the right time to have Taylor lead us through the, the sort of processes part that we have not seen yet. Um, because I think as far as figuring out what and where we can negotiate these other pieces, I think that's, this is probably the right time for that, unless Taylor think otherwise.
The one, the only one thing before we go there is John Cortez has asked us to discuss the the sixty percent, the sixty percent commercial requirement for the ground floor. And he, he, he is recommending that it be thirty percent. And I don't know if he's been talking, John obviously isn't here with us today. Spain, good for him. I actually had two other residents, business owners on North Main also come in this, this week, in the last two, this morning and last Friday, asking for the same thing. So just, you know, let everyone know that that's a request by John Cortez and um, two additional community members.
Okay. To set it at thirty percent or to allow it to go down to thirty percent? Either.
That's, that's a good question. That's, you know, there's, there's an option there. Do you add incentives? I, Carrie and I spoke this afternoon. You know, this is just, just an example. If you increase the, if the, the, the goal for that for the developers, obviously to, to have more residential, because residential is economically um, more feasible or economically more uh, more beneficial to a developer. So if they're going to do that, we can say something along the lines of, okay, but you have to do twenty percent inclusionary housing instead of the required ten, whatever it is. So um, there are options for us to.
Wait, wait. So, so we, right, right now, it's a minimum of sixty and they want a minimum. Uh, we, they, they want to, they want to be able to go down to thirty. If they, if they, if they want to, they still could do sixty.
Still could do sixty. Yeah.
Do we have a, we have a max though, right? We do, we don't have a max rather.
No, it could be a hundred of the ground floor plate if they want.
Oh, oh, okay.
And just as a frame of reference, in the Newton Village Center overlay districts, they are, they have a hundred percent um, active ground floor use, uh, minimum. So.
I'm sorry, that's where?
In Newton Village Center, uh, on, on a primary street, which is what North Main would be. I mean, they require a hundred percent active uses.
I guess if they, if they decide not to go with the height, they would just put in all residential.
Which they can do by special permit.
And if they want the extra floor, we're, we're asking them to do sixty. Um, and John feels that uh, they won't go for that. But what, but what is it that we, we would like to see? Um, and what are other communities doing?
I mean, I personally think thirty percent commercial on the first floor as a, as a by right is, is giving away what we're planning for North Main. I think we're looking to make it an active commercial corridor.
Yeah.
And I think going down to thirty percent feels like it's not going to be, it's going to feel like a residential building with a small thing on the side as opposed to a, you know, commercial corridor with, with lots of residential opportunities.
Yeah, I mean, we're allowing them to build higher.
But I, I, I like the idea of um, using it as a, you know, to, to push inclusionary housing. I think that's possible. Um, there's a.
So my, my concern is that once, if you're down to thirty percent, then that building is frozen that way in perpetuity. I can imagine that if you did it at sixty percent and at some point we discover that nobody's willing to put a business in, in, in a space that large, you could um, reclaim some of that commercial space into residential. So I think keeping it at sixty percent gives us future flexibility in case this doesn't work out. But giving, just starting at thirty percent means that we can't, we've lost that opportunity to see what the market does.
Right.
Sixty percent seems pretty, um, I mean, you're getting, essentially you are getting, unless you're putting parking behind it on the first floor, you might be able to get some sort of residential unit. I don't know how. I guess if you're a master architect, you can figure it out. But I'm more willing to, to be honest, I would, I would go higher and, you know, part of me says, let's go to eighty percent and you can go down lower if you put in another inclusionary unit. But that may be pushing the envelope a little too far.
And just to clarify, it's sixty percent of the frontage. It's not sixty percent of the area of the floor. So, yeah.
Right. So it could be lemonade shop off the front.
So that was my question exactly. For me, the importance is the front. If, if, if you have a big square building, I want most of that front of that being retail or commercial, which I should say. I care less if the back, if they want to, in my mind, if the front half of the building is commercial and the back half of the ground floor is residential, that doesn't bother me as much. What I don't want, if it's thirty percent of the frontage, I mean, that, that's almost nothing. Um, so I, I, I could go with thirty percent of the area, potentially, if that was all of the front of a building and it was, you know, this deep building that had the back of it was all going to be residential. I don't need them. Not every commercial establishment needs to be the deep establishment into the building. Um, but so, so knowing that's the frontage, that's even, I'm less likely to support that.
Right.
So I, I admit that I, I got this wrong. So if this is sixty, if this is a percent of the frontage, is this a percent of the total frontage? Or the frontage of the building?
Frontage of the building, I think, the way it's written.
Okay.
And there's a, there's a minimum depth, like twenty-five feet for each space. So.
Okay, so I am much less inclined to go for thirty percent of the frontage of a building.
Yeah.
That's just tiny. So that makes me wonder whether sixty percent is too small. Because that's the frontage of the building. You certainly don't need forty percent of the building to get to your residential units. Oh, look, we've got a picture.
There it is. Sixty percent.
Yeah. So I mean, that's an enormous lobby.
Well, it probably has amenity space and other things in there.
Yeah, but you know, those are. Yeah, I'm, I'm not inclined to be, to, to reduce it to thirty.
Yeah, and.
Agreed.
I mean, they are, you know, the, 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 the role that, you know, we, John wears both hats, right? He is a property owner on North Main and he has a really valuable voice on the board as, as the developer. And we, we are um, less affected by the special permitting process. And so, um, we want to make sure we weigh both sides. And I think, I think, I think the goal and the promise that we made to the town is that we're activating the frontage. And I think going below that without a significant trade-off would be going back on that promise. Anyway, um, that, that concern vetted. Can we take a look at the processes so that we have some idea of kind of document organization and then the process of applications through through the different steps?
Yep. Okay, so if we go in, if you open up the uh, the drive that I, like I sent the planning board uh, this afternoon, everyone to the, everyone in the public, all, um, everything shown tonight uh, will be updated and then uh, released on the planning. Well, you can actually go download it on the planning board website right now. Uh, but it will be updated based off of our comments um, on the planning board website uh, tomorrow morning. So if you go to the um, the folder, we have three new, we actually have a few new things, but we have three new documents. We have um, the MSMD warrant article, the MSMD architectural design standards. And then you don't see the review process. So I'll put that, that up there. So something that we have been um, that we've been allowed, um, granted the, the privilege to be able to remove the, the architectural design standards and the development standards from the, um, from the article itself and put them into their, their, their own document, uh, their own, their own regulations. This is similar to what we do with the, with the CBD and this is what is being recommended to us uh, by, by town council. Uh, this makes our thirty-three page article a a nine-page article and even this last section on parking can probably go into the uh, into the section two. So just, just so you know, is that while, while you're reviewing the, the architectural design standards and the development standards are now in their own, uh, their, their own document. And they are, as we've reviewed them already, the, they're as they were last week. Um, with some of the updates and comments that we've all submitted have been, um, have been inputted in here. So I recommend everyone take a look at this document titled Architectural Design Standards. And we'll.
And when you get a chance, can you just send out the link again? Does that have to be right now? Uh?
Sure, I sent it this, this afternoon. So if you search for an email from me this afternoon, you'll probably see it. Something that's new for, for everyone will be the, the review procedure. Um, this can also be its own um, document. So we don't have to put this in the, um, in the, uh, the article.
Okay.
Be its own. It, it could be its own document. And so we have a pursuit, uh, procedure, a standard review procedure, um, a procedure for a site plan review, procedure for design review and a procedure for a historical review. I'm still working on site plan, on um, special permit. So let me put this in your, in your Dropbox. One sec. Carrie, please entertain while I do that.
Does anybody know any good jokes? Um, there is a quick note from the council that there is no severability for the ADU um, age requirement. So it's the opinion town planner if we wait. So, so it would, so uh, any local zoning bylaw that's inconsistent with the new act would not be enforceable. So the um, ADU bylaw will be something we should try to bring to fall town meeting. Is how I'm reading this. Because otherwise we risk an overly complex process, which would require significant attention to each application by the building department and possible land use battles. So all to say, next Monday, we will probably be voting on the ADU bylaw to submit to fall town meeting. Do you need more time than that? I could, I.
No, that's good.
I was going to say, can I ask one, um, uh, I'm sorry to hark back on one thing, but it just, before we get away from it entirely. When we were talking about side setbacks, does that impact if you're on a side street? That that side setback would go to the um, into residential or do we have a next term, right, next into residential? I just want to make sure. Where we're talking about.
The sidewalk would still be.
Yeah, great, great. I just wanted to make sure that was there. Perfect. Thank you. Sorry.
All right.
So the ba, the, the, the biggest change for everyone to re, to review tonight are these, are these procedures. It's, it's, it, it's how, how is site plan review going to be? Or how is site plan or design or anything going to be, going to be reviewed? So it's document MSMD review process. It's in the drop, the uh, OneDrive. Here.
Yep.
And this is a combination of, we've had several comments from community members saying that they like what Lexington has done. Um, some of what Lexington has done isn't uh, completely compliant with the process that we have in other zones. So I was a little hesitant to suggest a process that's that's much different, that's, that, that's too far different from what we're currently using. But we did, we did go into Lexington's site review, uh, prior, or site plan review process and historical process and uh, design review process and use that as kind of a guideline to um, to what uh, what our process could look like. We're also using our existing CBD and ZDA process as well.
Okay.
So, um, one of the things that this doesn't have is, for instance, under site plan review, it doesn't set criteria. Or it doesn't set what the board can what sort of um, conditions can be applied. And the same for, so maybe I'm missing it, but it looks like, for instance, under design and historical, it just, it's a list of, of, of products that have to, or, or documentation which must be supplied. But it doesn't say anything about what the actual, what, what does the review entail? Whether there are conditions or anything like that. So as a developer walking into this, you still don't know what's going to happen in the review. I mean, site plan review, we know it's case law and we, you know, we kind of know what that is because we've, we have, uh, it's been done in town for a while, so we, we, we have some guidance on that. But for a design review and historical, is it simply, um, the board is going to get advice from historical and design review? And then what do we do with that advice?
So I would refer to eight dot twelve dot three in the, in the bylaw, which goes to the site review process. And if you still think that that's not enough, I can look more into it.
Nope, nope, nope. This is our existing bylaw or this is?
No, this is, this is the newly written one in the, in the warrant article.
I've only got so much window space here. Warrant article. I thought I opened that. What do I do with that? Inside it right there. Okay.
Historic review, historic commissions, the advisory board, demolition delay can be imposed. And then the right to consult.
What was the section again? Eight dot thirteen, I'm sorry.
Eight dot twelve dot three.
Eight, twelve, three, not thirteen.
Uh, eight, twelve, three, sorry. Okay, site plan review, et cetera. Okay, design review. Yeah, it just, it still doesn't say what it does. It just says it shall be required. And it doesn't say, it, it doesn't provide, I mean, I, I, I think it's the same as with the historical review is neither of these sells us what we can do with the information coming back from the advisory boards. Can we put conditions on the project? You know? So.
Is that solved by the board may consult, the board, the, the special permit granting authority may impose reasonable conditions on projects?
I think that would be the wording I would look for. I think this is where I don't know, since this isn't like a historical district, can we simply, you know, what is it, what are the legal levers we have to say you have to change your design? What are the legal levers we have to say, you know, other than, you know, I mean, is it a historical thing? I mean, is it a historical thing and they wait out the year, they can take it down. There's nothing we can do about that, but you know. There's just, you know, there's a there's a negotiation and a flexibility I'm trying to find where we could say. You know, yeah, you can tweak this, you have to tweak this. It's a reasonable condition. Can we apply that to design review and historic review? It's just, I I would really like to hear what town council has to say about that, because other than that, these are just advisory things. Um is there a, you know, one of the? You know, we certainly have, you know, context, and I think there, you know, this may this may come down to. Um what's in the design guidelines? In terms of, you know, we we will take. The, you know, we could say these don't meet the design guidelines and we are using these two advisory boards to inform us as to that. So maybe that's where it comes in.
Yeah, but does that just leave them locked in a we don't like it, we won't change it battle?
Well. If they don't want to change it and we say you have to change it because it's clear it violates our design guidelines and that's. They're stuck. They have to change them as long as we can. It's based on, you know, fairly objective things. Um because we do want people to develop. So. Um maybe that's the answer to my question. Is that.
I mean, what would have made forty churches smoother? You know, I always go back to like what would have prevented ten Converse Place from taking that long? Like what would have made a smoother process if we'd been able to say? Anything, any any project that took a long time to resolve.
Yeah, Tech Congress was weird because first of all, they took like eight months off.
Yeah, yes, they did.
So part of it's them, part of it was that they had so many pre-application meetings with the planning board. And they were trying to listen to every single member of the board who was not always saying the same thing. And so we kept going around in circles and then. You know, some members of the board expressed. A a deep set opinion late in the in the game. Versus earlier, I mean, it was, I think the problem was is we had too many pre-application meetings. And they tried to appease every member of the board in a different way. But since the board actually couldn't make a decision because they hadn't yet. Officially made. A proposal, uh they hadn't submitted a proposal, the board couldn't actually come right out and say, we don't like this. Right? Because you can't say anything until you get the actual proposal. So I think there was a little bit of. And it was the first big project, so I think we kind of all learned. The wrong way.
Right.
Um I thought the. Here's a way that I that I'm trying to prevent that type of thing. One, here's 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 the procedure. And each one of these needs 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 a description admittedly. But you have a letter of intent, the pre-submital meeting, which would be with. With town staff or with the planning board. A neighborhood meeting, which we currently don't require. I think is a good idea, especially for these projects where so much of our effort is going into. Thinking about the surrounding neighborhood. I think that having a neighborhood meeting. At early stages is really important instead of holding off to the public hearing.
Who hosts that? Do they host that?
I would, I would probably, the planning department would probably host it. Um because this is before reviews would happen, so it's probably the planning department would be responsible for. Coordinating the hosting, but the the but the developer would be responsible for hosting it. That's 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 how I how I envision it. And then design and historical review. Um being done before a formal submission. I think it's something that can. Uh that could be a way to. Make some some concrete decisions on. Design and historical direction before uh some of the larger larger de- decisions are made.
Do we have the same ability to request that they have design? Consultants, like do can we ask for the same level of quality in their plans if we're asking for it before a submission, if it's sort of a feasibility read?
We can't, we can't do a fifty-three G until they submitted. And I I there are there's a cautionary note. And that is that.
Why not?
We can't ask for them to do fifty-three G. Um if they haven't, they they haven't formally submitted. An application, right? So we they can't be held to do a fifty-three G because. They haven't submitted anything yet.
But we we can, we 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 can do in subdivision, we can do fifty-three Gs on preliminary reviews. Why can't we just do the same thing for preliminary view of a letter of intent?
Because a preliminary review is is a actual thing that's. In the law, that's this is a thing. I'm I'm pretty sure we can't do fifty-three G unless they've actually submitted a a a an application.
So what if you make design review an application?
So here's where my concern is with design review and historical review coming before an apple actual application. You can get trapped in a back and forth between the advisory committees. In terms of. Without having, so the advisory committees. We we saw this with um. With this with the um, uh shoot Karma Karma, is that the name of the restaurant downtown, the new one?
Yeah, lots of them coming.
Yeah, so what happened there was that the applicant went to the design review and historic. And then there was this back and forth between design review and historic. Before the planning board was involved. And the planning board had a different appreciation. Of what the design should be than the design review had. And so what happened was there were several months where before the planning board was involved. Where there were multiple iterations on the project and then the planning board was involved. And essentially directed the developer to go back to their initial design. So there was an awful waste of everyone's time.
No, it that I think it's important to have be able to have that give and take. Uh I I think that. Not everyone agree.
But not not before the planning board is involved because it's the planning board, which is the final say so. And if the planning board has a particular view. Then that has to be made clear to the developer. So that if the planning board, see the back and forth, I think what works is. The design, the the design goes to design review, they review it. They submit their findings to the planning board, which then looks at it. If the planning board says. They need to modify their design. Then that's done. The problem was that the the decision-making process. Was inverted.
Right.
Because it's the planning board which should direct the developer to say. Hey, your design doesn't meet our standards based upon our advice from the design review. And the problem was the developer didn't know who to talk to. And it turned out that. So I agree, Nick, that we need to have design review in the process. But the planning board has to be the one which says. You need to make these, these are the changes that you should make. Because otherwise you've got too many cooks. So. I think that process could have been streamlined. I think it would have ended up being a better result than what we got. If it had been streamlined and we'd been able to say, here are the guidelines we want, please do this and go to design review based on these guidelines. Instead, I think we we created a lot of animosity between the boards. Which uh doesn't help anyone. So.
So if we move design review to after the development. The the DRA, you'd be you you'd prefer that.
I think the one it's, yeah, because at that point. We have an actual, at that point, the key thing is is that everything is in flux. Until they put in this, that they submit their 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 application. So nobody has the same thing in front of them. Until they submit the application.
But I think.
Because they can change things on a week by week basis and nobody will know.
We we need to get the design review in early and they've asked us, we've had that conversation with them, that it it helps them to at least have access to. The information early. So that they can be working on it.
I I I agree.
Waste their time either on something that's not going to be tenable. That make that makes sense. I mean, historic is essentially weighing on, is this resource valuable? So that historic early will get, you know, that I I think that early makes sense, but I completely agree if. This use doesn't make sense, this these parameters don't make sense, this isn't what the neighborhood needs and it's already designed, it's a lot of wasted time for DRC. And the applicant.
And and again, we had, we had instances where because it hadn't been submitted yet. Everyone was looking at essentially different plans. Because they would, they would adjust them and then you wouldn't know which one they were talking about. So. And we hit, we kind of had that with Forty Church as well. So. Um I agree, Nick, I think they they need to come in as early as possible, but so we don't waste everyone's time. We get the committees involved after there's a proper submission.
Yep, and this is where the design guidelines matter.
What what about, what about historical though?
I think historical has to go afterwards because if they are redeveloping an historical structure. There is going to be some sort of. It's not, is this a historic resource? Is, are they? Are they developing it appropriate to the historical resource? So I think that has to come in after the plans are frozen.
That's so that I'm actually gonna. I actually disagree with that one. You actually convinced me on the DRC one. I'm gonna disagree with that one because. I think that historical's decision at this stage is going to be crucial to what they submit. In their development review application. So if there, if a demo delay is imposed, that's going to significantly change what they present in their. In their final application.
I agree with that. I think that will see.
But they can't, they can't propose a demo delay unless they've actually asked for one. Unless they've actually submitted. An official something. They have to submit for a demo delay. So that's a separate process completely from from our review.
So do we do enough with the map of historic resources to give the developers a heads up? These are, these are not. Do we do enough somewhere between the map of historic buildings and the bylaw to let them know what will be expected before they submit? If we don't see historic first?
No, I I don't want to weaken the position of the historic. I I I I mean, we've already weakened the DRC. And I I don't want to see with historic.
No, we're not, we're not weakening.
Nick, we're strengthening the, we're strengthening the DRC here. The way that I had was we've just strengthened it.
Yeah, and I I want historical involved completely. It's just that the discussion about demo delay is a separate. Process from what we're doing here. Because it's not even under the zoning.
Clear about that.
Yeah, the the demo delay is under the is is under a totally different set of bylaws. It has nothing to do with zoning. So.
It's helpful to have reference to it so that people are clear.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But all I'm saying is that the historical review. Will happen, this the the demo delay historic review by the historical commission is a is separate from the zoning. And it's separate from the planning board. So it doesn't really fit into our schedule at all. Because that happens completely. Orthogonal to anything we do. So it's helpful to have it in the document saying this is going to happen, I agree. But in terms of our process. It can happen, it, you know, it's it they're gonna submit for a demo delay. Whenever. But it it may be at the same time they submit for, you know, they're built their their application. It may be earlier, you know, we have developers who submit for demo delays long before they decide what to do with the property. So all I'm saying is that the historical review. I think the most helpful part of the historical review is when they see the actual design and they say. Hey, this is. A an an acceptable redevelopment or it's not. And in the mic, and and so my suggestion is that's the same, it's the same thing as we move it to the same place where it's design review. Where we have a a stable set of plans they can comment on. I think they can always go to historical or design beforehand if they want to. There's nothing which prevents a developer from saying, hey, I'm going to go to historical, I'm going to go to design early. There, I mean, that's up to design review and historical to whether they want to meet with them. So there's nothing preventing them from doing that.
Who is in the pre-submital meeting? Is that between the the uh who just who is in that meeting?
Uh that's to that's typically staff.
Staff, okay.
It's 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 typically. They go over what the zoning is, they go over what's possible, you know, all of the technical issues, letting them know. What's going to come up in discussions with the town and with the neighbors. It's at that point where they might say, hey, whoa, we maybe we might have to do something different. So that's.
That's. Yeah, it's it it's pretty crucial. I mean, it mostly catches the the egregious stuff. So we aren't wasting our time later on.
So that I I see where you're going, Brian. That would be a minute to be like, this is a historic resource. You're gonna have to stay. Yep, that heads up about that. I don't know if. Design would play into that yet because I'm assuming they don't come to a pre-submital meeting with plans. I'm assuming they come with a parcel purchase and they say, what can I do?
Yep, typically.
But it wouldn't hurt if at the pre-submital meeting, somebody points out, this building you want to tear down. You're thinking about tearing down potentially was built in eighteen seventy-two. It it's gonna have to go through the that process and. Might well have a demo delay um because. That would just help them a lot. I assume that's what's already happening though, so.
Yep.
So from a. One of the things that I think is it's it needs somehow be clarified is. What stage does a project have to be in before it goes to a neighborhood meeting? So. You know, what is the minimum? You know, is it ninety percent design? Is it fifty percent design? You know, one of those things is that. If you 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 you're not gonna, you know. You want to present a realistic view of what the development is going to be. Developers don't like going with half, I won't call them half-baked, but let's just say thirty percent plans. Which might be what they have at a pre-submital meeting. How do you define when you do the neighborhood meeting? And 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 I'm sure you know where I'm going on this is like, I think the neighborhood would like to have say in the matter. But they need to have a a fairly concrete realization of what might be there. And so I don't know where you draw that line. Did you, um Taylor, you said you modeled this after Lexington, the neighborhood meeting?
Uh neighborhood meeting is pretty common in in many jur- in many other towns, cities and towns.
And it's usually pretty early?
It's very early, yeah.
Yeah.
I would say thirty percent design is pretty generous. It's 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 usually a, it's usually an early on. Process to start understanding what the neighborhood does and doesn't and doesn't want. And it's.
Yeah.
It's it it's a two-part, it's really for two things. One is to allow the developers to build rapport. With the neighbors. Um and the second being to not be not get to that ninety or even fifty percent design process, spend all that money and then. And then have a public hearing and have all that backlash at that time.
Yeah.
Uh the the intent is to have it as early as possible.
Okay, well, if that works for other places. I'm just, you know, it's one of those things where I can, I can imagine that. Developers might not want to do a neighborhood meeting. Too early. But if that, if that's what other.
I mean, do you think developers ever want to have? Any.
I think they never want to have it. I agree.
Well, I think they want to know the neighborhood's not going to sue them because their tattoo parlor doesn't have enough parking.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, so you know, I'm just, I want. My my, I'm coming at this from, you know, having the neighborhood have a concrete idea of what might be there. And, you know. I've seen a number of, you know, there have been neighborhood meetings with other developments. And if it's if this too vague, then, you know, people don't have a good idea of what's happening and there's a lot of. Misinformation, which is natural because you don't understand all, the details aren't all there. Misinformation, which is natural because you don't understand all, the details aren't all there. And so I just, you know, wanna reduce confusion. But if it works, it works. Let's, we can go for it. Okay.
So are we moving historical review after into the down below? Yeah. Yeah. Right there, never mind.
Okay.
Are you editing this live, um, Taylor?
Kind of. I'm not showing everyone all my notes, but yeah.
Oh, but if I were to go to the, to the sharepoint.
Yep, you can see it, yeah.
Okay, so I'll go there instead of looking at this.
Okay, so where in this are we able to? Negotiate incentives or to? Are we issuing any waivers? What, how are we, how are we able to tailor this if we need to?
We do have a section for waivers. But I think to the Ebs' point earlier on is that there's, there's not, there's currently not enough information in here that, that. Says what the planning board can and cannot do during these review processes.
Okay.
I guess I, so, so not enough information has been added on that, yeah. I guess. Not, I guess, I know.
Um, one, one thing that I might point out under the, the section on waivers. So there are, um, typically we have two different types of waivers. One is a waiver of. Um, some of the documentation. So for instance, if you're just changing the door, you don't need to give us landscaping or something like that. So we sip, we go through a process where we waive the, the, the required documents for submittal. And then there's a waiver of actual parts of the zoning, like dimensions or things like that. And I don't know if we need to call those out as separate.
I mean, we can. This is very broad. This technically allows the developer to. Request a waiver for anything that they want without, without us specifying.
Okay.
What we will, what we will. Allow waiver requests for, which we, which we do in the CBD. So, so what we do in the CBD today is we, we have that list of here are the things that would, that we want to see. And then during the, um, during the pre-application meeting, I work with them to say, what waivers do you want? And then I present to you the requested waivers. What is being done here is in their formal submission, in their formal application, and they will say, we want waivers for X, Y, and Z. And then you get to grant that or not in your review process.
So that's interesting because I, I, I've read more carefully the decision on a request for a waiver here, which was on page who knows what seven. It says, the board may make its approval of a waiver dependent on conditions that will achieve the objectives of the position. Provision or standard waived. So. If we wanted to, for instance, say, yeah, we will waive, um, parking spaces if you put in another inclusionary unit. An affordable unit. We would have to broaden this language. Because it would be beyond the objectives of the provision or standard waived. Cause this is a very narrow focus. It says, we'll waive this because what you're doing isn't really changing the whole thing. But if we're gonna tie in inclusionary housing, which is a different presi- provision or thing, we need to broaden the language here.
You think that that's the case even with number two?
Uh, includes specific reasons for its action?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I, it says.
That grants you the ability to, wouldn't you think that would grant you the ability to say, because any reason you feel?
No, because it, it specifically says that we can only approve it. On conditions that achieve the objectives of the provision or standard waived. So. If we waive the, for instance, let's say we waive the parking, we go from one. Per unit to point seven five per unit. Because that's the only way they can put units over at Andrea's place, Andrew's Pizza. That doesn't talk about, that, that has nothing to do with inclusionary housing. It doesn't give us the lever there unless we tie it into something else. Cause I think someone should come in and sue the town and say, parking has nothing to do with what you just said. With, with that waiver. Yeah, or they could say, you've, you've waived the front setback. And you're gonna allow them to do something else, but waiving the front set, you know, there's. I think we might need. Like more expansive language there and maybe that's something that town council should look at. Maybe I'm wrong. That's, that's.
No, I can see, I, I can see your point. Yeah, no, yeah. I mean, the, the intention is to make it broad, so. Or the intention was to make it broad.
Yeah, I mean, I think as long as we tie it to some part of, I mean, the important thing is that it is tied to a part of the zoning bylaw. Cause you don't want to give the planning board carte blanche to do anything they want. Um, but. Allowing us to, 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 to tie it to another part of the bylaw would be useful.
Alright, I understand.
Yeah, but I, I guess, or I'm following up on this because I think it's important. When you said carte blanche, I think that's important too. Um. We couldn't just, someone couldn't come in and say, I want to build a thirty-story building. And we say, well, if you put in, uh. A hundred affordable units, that'd be great. Um, that would seem to be beyond the scope of anything in the bylaw. So assumably, there has to be some limit. To what we can waive. Um, and that has to be spelled out somewhere, what we can waive and why we can waive it. Um, you know. The thirty-story building obviously is extreme, but if somebody wants to put in a six-story building, but they said, we'll give you a twenty percent affordable unit. Is that something that we would have the rights within this to do?
So the, the planning board can always waive whatever they want and then that would be illegal. And when they say, they would take us to court and they would win. So I think that you always have that, but certainly the design guidelines, which would say something about character of the neighborhood. It's pretty obvious when you look at the zoning that we, you know, we've, we've stepping it down. It's four and a half to three and a half, six would be way out of the norm. I think there's enough. There, there. Like I said, boards can do illegal things and then they get sued. The key is that. We don't, we have enough guideline, there's enough in the zoning bylaw indicating what that sort of, um. Now, there's a word I'm looking for, but it doesn't matter. What that collection of things, what the vision is, and it's pretty obvious what, what, so. So there.
Yeah, no, I, I think I, I agree with everything you just said. Um, so would it help? To have those specific in the guidelines, what? Like you can have one parking space or with a waiver, you can get down to point seven five. You can have. Three and a half stories, but with a waiver, you can get four and then spell out what you can get a waiver for, or is that too prescriptive?
I think that's too prescriptive because it doesn't really allow you to. You, it's, I mean, each lot is so different. Each project will be different. Um, you need the flexibility, but you know, I, I think. There's obviously, yeah, I think you need the flexibility. I think there are enough guardrails. To prevent the, and especially if the board has to specifically tie it. And I think that the key is the language here that has been highlighted. You, you have to be specific. You can't just be vague about it. Cause again, if you get sued, it's gotta stand up in court. And, and, you know. The last thing we want is town council to tell us that there's no way he's going to support, you know, provide us with legal, um, counsel because we are so wrong.
Let's abort that.
So does that go? I'm looking over inclusionary housing. We allow, we allow, so if we make, if we, if we get to waivers. And we allow for. A, a specific provision of these regulations for which the waivers requested. So we're, uh, we're asked, they're gonna ask for a waiver related to inclusionary housing and the bylaw we allow for. Uh, we allow for a reduction in parking and a reduction in required open area. So is that the sort of cross-checking we need to do? We have incentives embedded in the actual bylaw. So are there other situations that we need to think about? That we could embed in the bylaw so that the process could be. A little ironclad, even if it adjusts over time. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think maybe that's something for town council to give us on, I, I mean, we, I.
But we would have to know what we'd be willing, like we had already premeditated, okay, inclusionary housing as per the. You know, either CBD precedent or just us noodling on it, you know, led to incentives we're willing to give up for inclusionary housing include. Parking and buildable footprint. And then we also discussed and we should potentially add to the bylaw. Um, uh, commercial frontage requirements. So.
We could. Yeah, I mean, I could think of, you know, if we wanted to have, you know, if someone was willing to put in a larger public space. And we gave them relief on a back, a rear setback if it didn't affect the one, you know, the property behind the. Excuse me, because it was, you know, industrial or something.
So where's the easier place to sort of create this game of go fish? Is it in the bylaws or is it in the process?
I think it's a site plan review.
But site plan review is written a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah, and as long as we have the legal okay to be able to do it in site plan review. I mean, it's, it's. We don't have to grant the waivers. That's the key thing.
Yeah, okay, so the, so the, I just don't want to leave us really far disconnected from Taylor who's sort of stuck writing all of this. Um, I want us sort of on the same page so that, so that there's guidance here. So we're, we're expecting that the waivers will become. A bit more specific about what the ask is and what the leniency might be. So if your inclusionary housing hits twenty percent, you may receive a reduction in parking and increase in. Uh, a reduction in expected commercial space or a reduction in open area requirements.
Yeah, but I think, see. If we take the CBD route. Which specifically says that if you do X, you get to build the building X feet higher.
Right.
Right? So they are very specific, but they also don't allow you to do anything else. So. I think we're at a stage right now where I don't think we have time to be very specific.
Yeah, so or other reasonable accommodations to the building design or something like that, that meets the need of the moment.
Yeah, I mean, I think we have to put in some guardrails so that the planning board can't go, you know.
Right, thirty stories, units, yeah.
Um, so I, I just don't know what that language might be. I mean, I think there is things we could have done in the, in the CBD which would have. Maybe made it better, easier. I don't know. I, I think there was, there was. So I, I just don't know what the language might be to, to. Give us the flexibility, but put up the appropriate guardrails. And maybe, maybe town council can guide us on that.
Okay, Taylor, is there other stuff you need from us to know where to go with this part?
Um, the. I mean, it kind of branches off from that discussion is. How, how do you want, how do you, how, how would you like this special permit process be written? Because you can. You can condition, I mean, very similar to waivers. I mean, I actually dovetails into this perfectly, right? If someone comes and says, I want to do a special permit. In our design, in our dimension tables. I mean, in some of them, we kind of insinuate what a special permit could be. But they could technically ask for anything and go through a special permit process. So how, how do we want to address special permit requests? You know, do we want to put maximums on things? Do we want to just hear everything and make a decision on each individual request? So we can create a form that says, write down your special permit, here, your special permit request. Uh, requests here and then we'll, we'll make a decision on each one individually. There's a lot of options.
So currently, subject to special permit is anything that's all residential. What are other? This is by special permit.
For the.
From everything to almost nothing and so.
Well, we have lots of uses that we have a number of uses at a special permit.
Right, but what other?
Well, I mean, what if someone comes in and says, I want to build. Um. I want to build a three and a half story building in W two. Will we accept that as a special permit? Or is it just a no, we will ne, we will not take that application? Right? So, so that's, that's what my question is, is, is do we allow people to submit? An application that is outside of our use table? And consider it a special permit project.
How is this done currently? The, isn't that the case currently? If you, if something's not in the use table, you can, I mean.
Use or, or, or dimension, yeah. And then it goes into.
It goes to the building department, which determines whether.
Goes to the ZBA, yeah.
So why?
Is that a special permit in that case or variance if?
No, that's a special, that would be a.
Still a special permit.
Yeah, I, I mean, a variances, they would still go to the ZBA.
Okay.
If it's a variance, but. I mean, I, is there something unique about this that requires we, we? Pick a different path?
So right now, we, we, right now, as written, it just says, special permit process is whatever it is, nine, nine dot. Whatever. It's just the, 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 uh, the planning board is the special part granting authority, not the ZBA. That's, that's what's written now. So I'm just, I'm, I'm just making sure that that's what, that's what we, we want. We don't want to have any. Special rules written into this. This section for. Special permit.
Yeah, are we entertaining a lot of foolishness because we allow special permits without defining what's gonna be a hard no?
I would say that, given the number of properties on Main Street. And the number of special permits that actually flow through the system through the entire town right now. Which aren't that many, because we see each of, every one of them, they come before us for an advisory opinion. That. The load we would get by just keeping it the same process as it is now would be pretty small. So I don't, I don't, I think it might be premature to put in. Something different from the current process. And. My concern is it might be confusing because we would have two special permit processes. Three, maybe? CBD doesn't have a different one. It just goes to us rather than to the ZBA.
Right, which will, I would like to adjust just slightly by bringing. The building commissioner into that pre-application meeting. So the special permit process is, is initiated at the beginning instead of. Instead of at the end. That'd be my only, that, that'd be my only change.
That sounds good to me. I mean, that makes more sense. But I, I, okay, so, so to step back and just say, I personally don't think that we need a different process at the moment. I think that. As things evolve, we may recognize that there are some fruitless endeavors. That should be shut down earlier. But I think that's also part of the pre-application process. So, um, I would say keep, keep it as is.
Could you repeat? So keeping it as is would mean someone can come in and say, I want three and a half stories. In W two. And they can come for a special permit.
They can apply for a special permit. They'll, they'll sit down in, in Taylor's office. Taylor will say. Uh, not unless you give us like three million dollars for the housing fund and they'll say, okay, I'll go away. But, I mean, that's pretty much how it works in the rest of town, you know. It's unlikely that you would go through a special. It's unlikely that you would go through a special permit without thinking you're going to get it. Although typically, a lot of towns do have a reputation for handing out special permits, but I, I don't think our town does, so.
Okay, so I agree with you, what you just said, now that I understand what you just said.
Yeah.
Good, can you tell me what I just said?
I, I.
Can you explain that to me?
I, I got it, I got it. So, so in, in, in that case, would you say the same thing for site plan review? I mean, we're, we're, we're kind of rewriting site plan review.
Well, I think, I think, um, site plan review, I think is a little different in that I think that the, um. Because it's kind of softer in the sense that it doesn't have, there aren't, um, I mean. Special permits are this thing in the law which has very specific guidelines, et cetera. Site plan review is a, you know, we can put reasonable conditions and I think that. We have, and site plan review gets more to how we envision. Main Street, so I don't see a problem with that as long as we have, you know, we have to list the conditions that, under which we will, you know. These are the, these are the criteria which we will review the project.
I, 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 I don't agree with weakening the site plan review in this way, and, and just as you said. That there, there's no, um. Legal beef in, in, uh, design, whatever the other one was. The site plan review is the only way that we really have the ability to. Uh, have a, uh, have some teeth in what the outcome is of these developments. And I don't want, I, I don't wanna see it weakened in the way that we're talking about.
Our conversation is weakening the site plan review? I'm, I'm confused about that.
Well. No, that was my impression, is it, it is, it's being, it's being moved down.
I think we're, we're finding, or I think we're trying to find a way to make it as strong as possible. I think that that's what, while, while remaining, well, I mean, I think D O has been very cautious about. Making sure that we do it with, while staying. Legal, I think that that's been, that's been the, the biggest thing, make sure that we don't get sued. I think that's the only. Uh, kind of ho- pu- pushback that then, but I think we're abiding by a very strong.
I, I just, I just feel like there's, there's, there's been a lot of discussion about, um. Uh, about site plan review and, and how it delays stuff. And. I, you know, I, 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 I'm just concerned that we're, uh. That we're weakening it, but if, uh.
So, so legally, Nick, the only thing that anyone can do under site plan review is place reasonable conditions. That's, that's through case law. So we can't stop a project from going forward with site plan review, we can only put reasonable conditions. So I'm not advocating that we reduce that at all. I think that this board should be the one doing, I think that we need to establish criteria. Which are appropriate for site plan review, so that we actually can point to something and say. Here is why we've come to this re- this decision. We have an existing set of criteria that Taylor referred to. Some of those are appropriate. Maybe we wanna change them and put other ones in, I don't know, but you're right, site plan review is. The place where we, because we are requiring site plan review for every project. So we've already increased. The applicability of site plan review relative to everywhere else in town. So we are making it a more important part of our process. I just wanna make sure that we have the appropriate criteria. Going forward, and so. I think if we took the existing criteria, reviewed them and saw, is there something that's particular to the North Main Street development? That we wanna add or we wanna change, you know, what, you know. I don't know, I'm, that's, I'm just bringing that up.
Are we, are we at the point where we can continue this on Monday or, or are we, uh, are we, are we doing?
Is the, what was the question?
Are we at the point where we could, where we can continue this discussion on Monday, uh, or are we, uh, are we still, um? How are we doing on time?
I mean, it's, it's late, but Monday we're really just meant to vote, so. Um, other kind of urgent things, so, so Taylor, anything else you need from us to understand the. Thoughts on the process, there's no way to. I, I hear your interest in wanting the design review to happen earlier and I very much understand not wanting to have. You know, developers respond to design comments before the project is feasible. There's no way to split the application, a draft, there's nothing we can do to. Get that better organized.
I, I mean, D E M's, D E M's points make, make a lot of sense. I, I, I think that. I think that what, what should be done is. Um, instead of making designer view and historical review, a. Uh, kinda a preliminary thing, we, we just, we, we, we make it a part of the applica- you know, make it a strict part of the application process. With their own, with their, you know, their own submission line, right? You say, you, you submit all this to the. To the, uh, to the, to D R C, they have this many days to review it, their, their purpose is this. You know, uh, just to spell that out completely, um, the way that I had written it was, was looser, but. But we'll make it, uh, but we'll make it tighter as, as, as D E M has recommended, yeah.
Could I just recommend that they should not be the ones responsible for sending it to the committees? They should just submit the whole package and then the planning department will submit it.
Right, yeah, so there will be a, there will be a form, yep, there will be a form that, that you attach and submit to, I mean, you'd submit to.
Yeah, it's just, because otherwise it could get lost and, yeah, anyway, yeah.
So the, the design guidelines will be seated and rules and regulations, right? So that's gonna be a document that will be easier to edit over time. And then, do we feel like we, we have sufficiently addressed? A more streamlined process for inclusionary housing that's willing to go above and beyond with clear. Design guidelines and, and with a, with a, you know, sort of less time consuming, less expensive process. We feel like we're kind of there. That's the major thing that we had sort of promised that we would try to deliver as a.
I don't know that we're there, because I don't think we've really discussed which parts. I mean, I know, I know, there has been some, some. Indication that waiving reviews is, is not inappropriate and I can understand that. So I'm not quite sure, I don't think we have enough information now to come up with a streamlined process.
I, I don't think we should waive anything for inclusionary housing, uh, and we'll waive reviews. I, I think, I think we need the reviews.
Yeah, I, I think one thing we can look at is to understand where the. I mean, this is gonna be new for us, so understanding where the bottlenecks are in the process and trying to understand, I don't know, I, I. I, I hearken back to, again, the forty B process, which is nothing gets waived. But it all goes before one board on a strict schedule and there's a, there's a pretty much a, a good idea of. How long it's gonna take from beginning to end. And that's what's the, you know, that's one of the benefits is that. You're not waiving the reviews, but there's, there's a clear path from beginning to end and maybe. But I, I don't think we're, we're anywhere near coming up with that right now.
Not. We have gotten, we, we, we have gotten approval from the Housing Partnership Board that they're, they're okay with how. Our housing, our inclusionary housing section is written. I know that's not the waivers, but, you know, that's something. It's a positive.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think one of the other things is that. If. The. When, in the preliminary meeting, in the pre-application meeting with the town, with the planning department, with the town planner. The, a discussion about where the syst- what the flexibility in the system is in terms of providing waivers. And, and looking for, um, you know, negotiations, maybe that is enough to create. A desire to increase that, or to increase, you know, whatever we want, like more open space or whatever. Um, maybe that's sufficient, we'll find out with time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, what other major, it's ten o'clock, what else do we need to? To make Monday work, we will have to do some reviewing on our own or Monday is gonna be an all day meeting. What else is outstanding, design?
I mean, the, 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 the biggest thing is, I mean, we've spent a lot of time on, on the, the design guidelines. We've gotten feedback from a lot of people on the design guidelines. We're gonna make, our, our decision about design is gonna happen on Monday. So, so if, if, if we, if. There are any issues with, with, with the document, if we want to incorporate anyone's feedback, if we want to. Um, you know, have new sections added or removed, tha- that all has to happen either tonight. Or it has, you, you, you have to tell me what you want before Monday, so it goes into the article before Monday.
But I thought, I thought.
Can, I mean, can, can people from design review that haven't? Um, I, the, can that link be shared, the, the one that you, the one that you gave us to, to make comments on?
Everyone at design review has the working document that they can comment on.
Oh, okay, so for, um. Um, I know. Just D R C members and, and, um, and, uh. Um, Maura, uh, I wanna make sure that she has the opportunity to, to, just those individuals that, that, that.
Yeah, she's, she submitted her comments.
Okay.
Um, so I have a, I have a process thing, if the design requirements are being moved into regulations. Then technically, we don't need them as part of the article, correct?
That is correct, um, I think that, and you, you can make a different decision, I think that it would be. I think that you should present everything that you have in the article, even if it's a separate regulation. I think that it should all be printed out and presented simultaneously, even though you do reserve the right to change them at a, at a future date.
I, I'd like to see some of them in the article that are appropriate, um, I don't, I, I think that we can. Kind of enhance them in the separate document. I, I'd like to see them in this, in this document, if, that, as appropriate.
So, I, I think we haven't really had our drawn out fight over design requirements yet, so I don't want to. I, I'm not so sure we will get through them next Monday. I just wanna point out that for the Center Business District, it took several years after passage of the zoning to finalize the guidelines. So. I don't, and presenting something to town meeting, which may significantly change before it gets actually. Voted on by the board, I think is presenting, I don't think it's fair to, I think it's sort of. Not fair to town meeting and it's sort of bait and switch.
My, my feeling is that there are some design guidelines that can be included, that, that are kind of. Uh, benign. And that, uh, to the extent that we wanna have more strict ones, we can work on the separate document.
What's an example of a benign dat- design guideline?
I, I, I don't know, I, I don't have an example, but, but I, I know there's, I know there's a difference, I know that you can. You can say more in the separate document. Um, I, 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 I trust, I trust design review to come up with something, I. I trust, uh. Maura and, uh, Ellen.
And, and I'm gonna say flat out that I have, I have some significant disagreements with some of the comments made, so that's why. I think this is, you know, and I'm not shy about being vocal, as you all know, so I, I don't know. What's gonna be possible next Monday, and so I just wanna.
I mean, s- similar to the setbacks, I think if we get very detailed in the design guidelines, we risk. You know, pouring out a pile of Legos and trying to put them together and we, we limit, we sort of tie the hands of architects. Who are gonna try to create a whole design. So I agree with Nick that there are some, there are some guidelines that will be important to put in, but we've seen some things that are very detailed. And, um. It may not, it may not sort of naturally lead to the result that we want if we're not allowing enough flexibility for, for a sort of whole look at a building. So it's a dri- it's a very difficult line to walk and. You know, this is, this has already been a long process and it's a, it's a. It's a point of deep passion in town, it's an important point in town, we have to have. We have to have something in front of town meeting because we don't wanna update the bylaws without design guidelines, but I really think. Being overly prescriptive in the fir- first incarnation is gonna be a mistake. So I think we're, we're, I think we're gonna have to edit the parts that are very prescriptive. And soften those and allow that to sort of come out of, come out of some of the discussions that are gonna happen after the town, after the warrants and. And after we, after we pass the zoning.
In the, in the separate document.
In the set, that's why we're separating it, it's easier to, it's easier to let it evolve.
I would like to submit to town meeting only what. A formally submit to town meeting, only what town meeting has to vote on. And between now and town meeting, if we have finalized design guidelines. It can be a handout at the table of the design guidelines that, um, they could be draft, they could be final. But I don't know what we put in the warrant or the motion book. That is a design guideline that they're not voting on, because they're not, if it's outside of what they're voting on, it's not gonna be. It might be background, but it's not gonna be in, in the motion. So, um, I'd prefer, I'd prefer not just have them voting on what they're voting on and we can also, we can spend the next two months. Finalizing those design guidelines to go along with that, um, but, I mean, I, I still want them voting on, thinking they're voting on those design guidelines. When they actually don't, I mean, they voted on to us, to vote on those design guidelines, not, they're not directly voting on them.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't disagree with not bringing up, um. You know, any opportunity for, you know, town meeting to sort of debate something that can't be resolved, because I think it will. It will blur what we're trying to pass, but I also think that we have to give them a very thorough idea of where we are for design guidelines. We, we're, we're, we will, um, you know, be weaving this into the three A design guidelines, which we are. Um, expected to give an update on and, and, and possibly a final form. Um, close to town meeting, just because it's now possible to take three A applications and we need design guidelines. Um, so it's, this can't be sort of an open scrolling, I, 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 you know, I'm, I'm smiling because the, the handouts at town meeting is like. Nobody's favorite, it's like nobody's favorite option, because releasing pages of design guidelines for people to read as they're walking in is like. Um, but.
But in pushback, they're not part of anything that they're voting on at town meeting. Um, you know, if they, they don't like the design guidelines, we don't want them to vote down the article. So, I mean, we, we open ourselves up to risk that they start debating something that they have no say over.
Right, but we also.
Wouldn't you also be worried about them not voting in favor because they don't know what it's gonna look like?
That, that's what I mean, we need to give it up, we have to give it.
We passed three A without the design guidelines.
Yeah, but there was so much at stake, right?
So, I, I mean, I think.
Town loses funding.
I think that part of the presentation can include a concept of where we are going with the design guidelines. I don't think that we have to go into extreme detail on that, we can talk about the, the. The general form that we want, we want stuff that's appropriate for the scale of the lots, appropriate for the neighborhoods. Um, you know, respectful of the residential, um, we want, you know. We want good materials, we want, you know, good architecture, um, we can say all of those things, which I don't think is. Far from the truth, the actual nitty gritty of the guidelines is something that. You know. you know, we're not gonna get it done by next, by the twenty, whatever, next Monday. That's just impossible. We won't agree on them.
Yeah, but we have two months and we have a pile of quality detailed material that we mostly at this point need to edit. I mean.
I would, you know, I'm just, you know, perhaps the CBD was a larger project.
I, I think the CBD was a, was a, um, was a really comprehensive process. It's a more sensitive area in a lot of ways and it's, and it's, it's done. So we have that to, to, um, build up.
So we can, we can, I think, have at hand a, a, an outline of the guidelines for town meeting. But again, I don't, presenting them as something that they should vote on. Because we can, you know, we can change the guidelines.
No, I, I agree. I agree putting it up as if it's gonna be of something town meeting is voting on is, is, it's not, it's not even right. I mean, it's, it's the wrong thing to say, but I also do not, I mean, we will have probably see North Main parcels developed in three years. We can't take three years to create the design guidelines. We should have, you know.
I, I agree. I, I would hope that we get it done within a several, within several months. And putting together an initial set of guidelines by fall town meeting, I think is possible. I don't think it's possible to do it in a week. Um, and, uh, so I, I.
Well, I agree with that. I agree with that.
Yeah, so I'm not.
We get to town meeting, it should be like, we're all, we're a split field on wrought iron. It should not be like, we're, we, we're, we have no idea. We should be pretty close.
I agree. I hope. I mean, I, I, I hope that we're there. Yeah.
Anyway, okay. So Nick, I don't know if that answers your question as far as sort of like what our timeline is and how seriously we're taking this, but hopefully it's um, a work very much in active process and one we're probably not gonna wrap up by next Monday or our quick sign off on the twenty third. Because it doesn't need to be in the warrant article. So let's just do what's on fire. The warrant is on fire.
Yeah, we have eighty years to talk about next Monday too, so.
I know. Spacy, spicy meeting.
I mean, there are some, there are some of the points that were made by the DRC that are in the document now. I think.
I think we're still getting feedback from D, I mean, we got some today that we've like barely had time to digest. So we're, we're, it's not, it is, you know, we're still, we're gonna hear from the public, hopefully after tomorrow's presentation. So we are trying to be thoughtful and inclusive for all of the comments that are coming in.
Okay.
But I would, I would hope that before they go into the document, we, we vet them.
Yeah, whatever's in the bylaw has to be right by, hopefully Monday, probably the twenty third. Other major things that need to be tackled before we can feel good that we will have a fairly short, I mean, I'm really, I re- would really like Monday's list to be like, you know, can we, what, what major points of contention do we have from comments in the document? We've all read over this fairly clean warrant process. Um, and then we will vote to approve the warrant. That's, that's really what I'm hoping for. I don't wanna open a fresh discussion about anything next Monday. So what else do we need to tackle? Are we happy with the use table?
Did we manage to, did we figure out whether a tattoo parlor is an adult's use or is it go under personal services?
I, I hadn't looked it up yet.
It's very important. I'm never gonna get a tattoo, but I, I, I think we should.
You gotta be ready. You could have that moment.
I could have that moment.
All right. Any other major sections? Any other issues anyone wanted to raise this evening? Any other guidance Taylor needs from the board before?
This, this is gonna be a, a very unpopular suggestion. Um, we still have the ability to schedule a meeting on Friday. Would it give us an extra buffer? Just in case something comes up, cuz otherwise Monday will be, could, you know, I'm just, just saying. You can vote me down.
I think the only available time on Friday would be at ten in the morning. Um, for a few reasons and I don't know if we wanna do a whole other meeting. Um, well, I know we don't, but should we? Uh, let me defer first to Taylor who has a lot of writing to do.
Well, I mean, whether the meeting is necessary or not, I mean, something to know is that, of course, it shapes, shapes out this way, but I'm traveling this weekend. So that means that all my writing needs to happen before the weekend. I can do a little bit over the weekend, but it's not gonna be that much. So if you meet on Mon- on, on Friday, I'll really only have limited amount of time to make those edits before Monday. I'll have some time. So if there's small changes, sure. I won't be able to add broad sections, unfortunately.
I, I mean, I, I, I mean, what's the difference between Friday and Monday? I mean, we, we bring it up on Monday and then, and then Taylor makes the edits when he's back from his, his weekend.
I, I was, I was suggesting additional meeting time rather than earlier meeting time, just in case we have some issues which take longer than we expect. I mean, I don't know how long it'll take to get through the ADU stuff, so.
Well, why, why don't we just decide on the ADU stuff? I mean, we're, we're done with the ADU stuff. We're, we're, we're gonna.
Well, we have to agree on the edits. So.
I left, as far as we've left the conversation, we're done. I think we're, I think we've just been dragging this thing out.
So to Taylor's point, if we meet both Friday and Monday, there's not much time for him to turn anything around between Friday and Monday. So meeting twice would be for us to have the time to discuss, but it wouldn't necessarily yield a different product. So can we do the same thing editing the ADU document on our own?
I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it's ready to go. I, I, I don't see any issues with it. We, we, there were some small disagreements, but I think it's, it's ready.
Uh, thoughts, Di?
I, I think there are. I would, I would say there are at least a couple of places where I disagree with the, with the wording and I think they're substantial. Um, we also, you know, there was a discussion about whether we wanted to extend site plan review to all ADUs. I have opinions on that and I know Brian was, was, that was something that he was interested in. So if all we're doing is thinking about patching this over to get this past the state, um, and we wanna make minimal changes.
Don't, didn't we do the straw poll or we haven't decided whether we're gonna do it for spring or fall?
No, we, the, we straw pulled and the severability is not in place. So we do have to rewrite it. So we are split. There's, there's, there's two of us who would like to wait till spring and two of us who would rather do something for fall.
Okay.
Thinking fall is, is not a big change, then, um, we can do the minimum required for fall, but we still have to decide on the language.
Okay.
Well, the first we saw the lang- I saw the language was today. So I mean, I think we have a chance to review it like, we only saw it really this evening.
I mean, I'm not super keen on having another meeting on Friday. I'm, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm, I, I think I'm gonna have to leave this meeting shortly. Um, but I'm looking forward.
It's just a suggestion. I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not wed to it, so.
Just leaves a lot for Monday.
You could certainly schedule a meeting on Friday morning at ten AM as you said. And then come Thursday night, we can decide if we need it. And if we need it, we got it. And if we don't, we don't.
And I will say that that would be probably Taylor's call based on whether or not he feels like he's gotten enough edits on the ADU document from us to feel like it's done, or if it's, if there's a bolus of information we need to get through cuz we're conflicting.
I ca- I can't, I can't do Thursday night.
No, no.
No, no, no.
It would be a call someone would make Thursday night to, to whether or not we.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
I, you know, that approach works for me.
Okay, let's do that. So, uh, if we feel like, if, if there seems to be consensus on the ADU bylaw, then Friday will probably be canceled.
And, and just so everyone knows, that means that I, I have to post that agenda now. So, um.
I mean, you could, you could post it just in case, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not keen on it.
Yeah, if you just post the agenda and say we're talking about, we can just keep it to eighty years.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I, I'm, I'm just saying town clerk has to post it before ten AM tomorrow morning and, and let's hope that they do that. That's all I'm saying.
Yep.
I'll, I'll go up there to make sure that they do.
And say hi to Mary Ellen from us.
She's been very busy, but I will say hi.
Yeah.
I think we're all getting punchy. It's getting late and, uh.
Yeah. Okay. I feel like we have a plan. It's just, this is just that time of year. It stinks. We just have to get through it. We're, we're, we've done so much great work. We don't wanna leave it on the table. I will take a push into adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Roll call vote, Diab.
Yes.
Brian.
Yeah.
Nick. Possibly gone. I'm an, yes as well. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Wind Cam for hanging in there. If you're still signing, thank you, Taylor. Thank you, all the people who made it to the end.
Thank you, everyone. So late. Appreciate it all. Good night.
Good night.
Night, everyone.